To order, if I could have the Girl Scout Troop 10240 come for the Pledge of Allegiance and have everybody stand. We have Samantha Murray, Bay McDonald, and Phailene Howard.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Samantha Murray, and we are representing Troop 10240. We got this opportunity for making a bee patch, and we are sponsored by the North Coast Resource Conservation and Development Council.
Hi, my name is Bay McDonald, and we were, like, the bee patch is going to be at Airwood Winery. You might notice that we are all wearing these same T-shirts. These are made locally, without pesticides, in the cotton fields. One-third of the bee population has died since 2006 because of pesticides.
I'm shorter, okay. So, for the bee patch, all of us, all of the flowers that we are planting are perennial, perennial, yes, all year round, and we have decided not to use any pesticides so that we won't harm as many bees, and, oh, yes, we're trying to grow the population of bees.
Thank you. And I'm gonna take a quick recess so we can get a picture with you. If I could have the council members come down. To order, City Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Present.
Councilmember Hunley?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
At this time, we'll do comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the City Council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comment at the time that item comes to the Council's consideration. Do I have any comments from the public?
Hello, David Iker, 1110 Loma Court. At the last City Council meeting, during the discussion of the contract for the Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Edwards mentioned he had joined the chamber. This prompted me to research the conflict of interest laws, and they're very complicated. According to the chamber's website, at least three of the members of the, Councilmembers, members of the chambers of commerce. The good news is, you don't have to recuse yourself simply because you're a member of the chamber. The bad news is, all three of you should have disclosed that you were members. California Government Code Section 1090 covers conflict of interest for contracts. Subdivision A states that city officers, quote, "shall not be financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity, or by any body or board of which they are members," unquote. There are exceptions for which city officers are deemed to have a non-interest, providing certain circumstances and conditions are met. One of these exceptions, listed in Section 1091.5, quote, "An officer shall not be deemed to be interested in a contract if his or her interest is that of a non-salaried member of a nonprofit corporation, provided that this interest is disclosed to the body or the board at the time of the first consideration of the contract, and provided further that this interest is noted in the official records," unquote. Since two of the three councilmembers did not disclose that they were members of the chamber, I reviewed the video three times. The provisions of Section 1090 were violated. So, what does this mean? Section 1092, subdivision A, states, quote, "Every contract made in violation of any of the provisions of Section 1090 may be avoided," meaning rendered void, "at the instance of any party except the officer interested therein," unquote. The Office of the Attorney General, citing court cases including Call versus Thompson 1985, stated, quote, "A contract made," excuse me, "a contract made in violation of Section 1090 is void and unenforceable. Despite the wording of the section, may be avoided." I suggest that the, you ask the city attorney what steps you need to take now. Best to do this soon, because with the contract being void, the status of any payments made under the contract is seriously called into question, and it may be illegal to make such payments. Another provision of Section 1090 says that if Mayor Cook was still president of the chamber, Board of Directors, he would have a remote interest, and as such, he would not be able to participate in a discussion nor vote in the contract with the chamber. There are other, there may be other, more serious conflict of interest violations concerning the chamber contract, if any of the councilmembers are suppliers of goods or services to the chamber, but I have no knowledge of that being the case, so I won't, so I won't present those now. Besides, I'm out of time.
No, I actually gave you four minutes, so you can keep going.
That's all I need, thank you.
And, yes, we are testing out our new timer today, so we'll have to be a little patient with it. Is there any other comments from the public?
Good evening, Larry Barnett, 637 Fifth Street East. I noticed your new timer, and I hate it. Louis Ramponi, in about 1996, proposed a timer with a red, yellow, and green light on it, and he had modified, being a television and radio repairman, an old streetlight that had red, yellow, and green lights on it, and he proposed we use a streetlight. The council voted it down. We never, in the 12 years that I was on the City Council, had any kind of timer, nor did we restrict the public to three minutes. We respected the community to come to the meeting, to understand that the agenda was full, to be courteous, to not go on longer than they needed to, and at the comment of the mayor, saying, "Could you wrap it up?" would conclude their remarks. It worked beautifully for 12 years. It respected the fact that people were taking the trouble to come to the meeting in the first place. This is rude. This is unpleasant. It makes people nervous. It reduces the ability for people to feel comfortable in talking to the people they've elected to enact the policies that they feel are important for the city. And despite whatever investment you made in this system, I would advise you turn it off and call it quits with this timer, because it is simply not the way the public should be treated, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public?
Kelso Barnett, 328 First Street East. I would like to echo the comments of Mr. Barnett, no relation. I think he very well articulated the fact that this timer is a little strange and doesn't really seem to fit in with the values of Sonoma and the values of your body. Tonight, I wanted to briefly just say a few general comments about the idea of the nomination process, in terms of the mayoral privilege and the right of the mayor to nominate people to all types of city commissions. These are just general comments. As you know, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, we don't directly elect the mayor. We elect five councilmembers, three one year, two the next cycle. And so, as a result, the mayor, I believe at some point, it was, it was decided the mayor is a ceremonial position. The mayor runs the meetings, and in 1984, at some point, the City Council decided, probably to make the process more efficient, the mayor would put forward nominations to all the different city commissions. But to sort of keep a check on that, because we don't want to disenfranchise the voters, because even though the mayor, in general, has a lot of power, in the sense that they get to dictate the way different city commissions are run, and the people that compose them, as sort of a check on that, not only does the City Council ratify those nominations, but also the mayor, and this isn't in the code, but by practice, at least for the last 30 years, the mayor interviews all the different applicants for the city commissions, and together, the mayor with the councilmember that he or she interviewed the applicants with, bring forward the nomination together. And I think those are two real important checks on the fact that we don't directly elect a mayor in Sonoma. And so, going forward, in general, for all commissions, I think that this is, these are important principles to uphold and to maintain, that the mayor, along with another councilmember unanimously bring forward a nomination, and to take your job as city councilpeople seriously, and ratify, and really vet, and make sure that the vetting process has taken place. I know at the last meeting, there were general concept, general discussion about the fact whether or not this should be discussed. I know it's on the agenda tonight, and that's why I'm speaking about it during public comment. I think this system, quite frankly, has served us well for the last 30 years. We can usually trust the mayor to bring forward responsible nominations, and so, I am not advocating or encouraging you to change the system, but please, in the future, for all nominations, you obviously maintain, this is totally distracting me, so, this is, this is horrible. But, in the future, for all nominations, I would both consider the unanimous nomination of the mayor and the fellow councilmember, and obviously use your ratification process. I think that's obviously, these are important principles to uphold, because we don't directly elect the mayor in Sonoma. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Fred Alabach, 195508 Street East. I would like to second Larry's comment about the timer, and I had asked the city at one point about the history of the timer, and I suggested a number of suggestions, which I never heard anything back about, and I think that it's frankly entirely anti-democratic to have this here. I don't remember seeing anything in the founding of the country about how Benjamin Franklin had three minutes, or any of these people had three minutes. And I remember things here in the council chamber about, for example, wine tasting on the plaza. There was to be no limits on that, or there's to be no regulations on things. And yet, here in the democracy, where the citizens want to share what they have to share, they're, they're limited and regulated, and I think that that's just, it's just not right to, on one hand, have the city not regulate and not limit things that are around the town, that people don't like quite a bit, and then people are limited and regulated here in the very democracy that's supposed to be making our country great. And I think this is totally distracting, and it's a really bad idea.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Clary, and I didn't know I was gonna speak tonight, but I would like to echo the comments of Mr. Barnett and Fred. I didn't even know this was here. This is a small town. I grew up here, and it's always been a little this, little that. We get along. This reminds me of the county, which is kind of sterile and a little too formal. And also, the tone on this is extremely obnoxious, and it just doesn't fit with our city, the way we do things, the way we've been, or the way we want to be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I, you have a paper all in front of you, I hope. On the top, it says Town Hall. I could do it that way. You hear me that way? And then, down on the bottom, left corner, it says Me Walking. That is a friend of mine, Dan. So, he was just taking his walk around the plaza, and then, to the left there, there was this, there's these three ducks having, well, we'll say sex. And there is two women. One woman, one woman is yelling out rape, just consecutively. Rape, 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 rape. And so, she got, the second woman got this stick, proceeded to, the first woman proceeded to kick the male duck three feet in the air, lofted that duck. The second woman grabbed this stick, and she hit the duck in the head with this stick a couple times. It could have poked his eye out. And then, she ran around, as you see, there's three ducks. She's, these two women are chasing these ducks around the pond where the fountain is, and you could see the arrow as she's hitting the tallest duck in the head with this stick again and again. And so, as you see the arrows, there's those two women chasing the ducks, and then, Dan, you could see Dan down there, and then he's walking over, and there's the lady and me. That means the lady, the two women, and Dan. Then they confronted, and he's telling her, "What the hell are you doing with the stick? Why don't you leave the ducks alone?" And then she starts coming out with profanities. She's just swearing up the storm, and then the husbands get involved. And so, then he gets on the phone and phoned up the police department. So, the police showed up. And so, say all this has happened, and I've seen it done before, where it's kids throwing rocks at the ducks. I think there should be signs put up down there by the ducks. Citations should be put out on the sign of some sort, because it's happened quite often. I talked to Gay upstairs, and she sees it from the window upstairs, that there's kids throwing rocks at the duck. I've seen it. I told the kids, "If you're gonna throw anything at the ducks, make it bread. That's the only thing you could throw at the ducks, bread." So, I kicked back, and I saw the kids run to the mom, which was over here at the other quadrant on Spain Street, sitting at the table, not even seeing where the kids are at. They could have been kidnapped. She wouldn't have known. So then, I went to her and said, "Your kids are throwing rocks at the duck." She didn't really care. It was, she went back to reading her book. So, it's, it's really disturbing to see this happen on the plaza, especially with our ducks. I like these ducks. I don't think it's appropriate to have anybody, a human being, getting hit in the eye with this, getting hit in the head, running around the, look how far they ran. These two women ran around there in full speed, kicking the duck three feet in the air. Picture it. A male duck getting booted three feet while they're having sex. Give me a break. How would you like to have sex and get kicked in the head?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm over by three minutes, probably.
Is there?
Well, I'd like to get on the agenda, though, regarding this.
I will, I will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name's Jeff Stewart, by the way.
Is there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we are meeting dedications. Is there any dedications for this meeting? Councilmember Aggermonte?
I enjoyed myself so much on my vacation that I've lost my voice. I guess I don't know. Yes, I do. I have a dedication for, I'm part of the Women's Club here in Sonoma Valley, and a young, about, she's 93 years old, Mabel Wilson, passed away on Sunday, April 12th. She lived in Sonoma for 40 years. She was a part of our organization for 34. She also served as a docent at the Toscano Hotel for over 25 years, only retiring just a couple of years ago. And if you can imagine, she was 93 years old. The couple of things personal that I know about is she was great at dominoes, and she always ran the 50-50 raffle. So, I would like to dedicate this meeting to Mabel Wilson, and I'll give that information to our city clerk, and they are getting the information from her family as to who this should be sent to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other meeting dedications? I do have one. We want to apologize for the loss of our city manager's father-in-law, Ray Pagoni, and I would like to have record show that we are going to be dedicating this meeting to him also. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and step down to do some presentations, and first off, if I could have Tom Russert or Wendy Peterson.
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, as trees provide major benefits to the community, including air purification, windbreaks, noise reduction, shade, and energy savings, production of oxygen, and important urban habitats for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and the city of Sonoma is well-known for its numerous and beautiful trees, especially in the historic plaza, which truly enhance the desirability of Sonoma as a community in which to live, work, rest, and play. In addition, the Plaza Tree and Bird self-guided walking tour encourage schools and families to enjoy this outdoor classroom, to explore the plaza, and become familiar with the many urban species of trees, birds, that abound. Whereas planting trees and maintaining older trees provides an opportunity for community interaction, volunteerism, economic development, and environmental conservation. And wherever they are planted, trees are a source of joy, spiritual renewal, and a symbol of peace. Whereas each year, at the Sonoma Arbor Day Celebration, the Rotary Club of Sonoma Valley presents their annual Conservation Award, presented to an individual of distinction who has made an appreciable long-term contribution to conservation through volunteerism. Whereas this annual celebration is a collaboration between Sonoma Birding, the City of Sonoma, Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, Rotary Club of Sonoma Valley, Sonoma Index Tribune, Crescent Montessorial School, Sonoma Valley Sun, Woodland Star Charter School, Sonoma Valley Women's Club, and Quarry Hill Botanical Garden. Now therefore be complained, proclaim that the city of Sonoma fully recognizes this National Arbor Day on April 24th, 2015. Do you want to say a few words?
So, I just, again, the Visitors Bureau has been so pleased to participate in Arbor Day. This is our seventh year, and again, we're having a wonderful celebration this coming Friday, meeting at 11 o'clock on the plaza at the amphitheater, so we hope that you can join us.
We're very pleased to announce that our friend, Ms. Haywood, will be the Conservation Award, Conservation Award by Rotary of Sonoma Valley this year. And just a footnote, that the beauty of this particular Conservation Award is that the Paul Harris, the founder of Rotary Club, and his wife planted trees in 50 countries all over the world, every continent. So, it's a very special award for a very special person, and we're thankful that the city's involved with us. Thank you.
Now, if I could have Robin Bowen? We don't have a Robin Bowen in the room. So, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas in 2014, there were 1,459 reports of child abuse, serious enough to require face-to-face investigation to determine if allegations of abuse were substantiated, and 202 children were removed from unsafe homes in Sonoma County. The Sonoma County Blue Ribbon Campaign, sponsored by the Prevent Child Abuse Sonoma County and the Child Parent Institution, will focus on educating all of us on the issues and magnitude of this problem. Whereas Sonoma County's Department of Health Human Services, Sheriff's Department, and the District Attorney's Office have joined in recognizing and supporting the education, prevention, treatment, and need to cease all forms of child abuse. Therefore, I, David Cook, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, do hereby proclaim that within the City of Sonoma, the month of April 2015 shall be observed as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And do we have Amanda Silva?
Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Sonoma. And whereas, national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. One in 17 men will be raped at the point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. Young people are at greatest risk of sexual violence, and youth aged 12 to 17 are two times, 2.5 times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted. We must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting the survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there are, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the city of Sonoma through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. Whereas the city of Sonoma strongly supports the efforts and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, as the mayor of Sonoma, I do proclaim the month of April 2015 Sexual Assault Awareness Month. If you want to say a few words.
Thank you. I want to thank the City Council for recognizing this. This is the second year that I've been here, and, you know, it's not an issue that goes away. It's an issue that Verity is committed to staying around until we work ourselves out of a job. That's our vision. And when we come together and talk about these things as a community, two really important things begin to happen, and that's that the shame and the blame on survivors begins to move away from the survivors, and begins to move toward the perpetrators of violence. And we start to make this not a normal thing, you know, and therefore, it becomes easier to prosecute the perpetrators, and it becomes easier to provide services to the victims. And so, everyone here that's a witness is part of that movement, and I appreciate each and everyone in the room today, and the City Council for making this something, you know, providing the forum for us to talk about this. So, I have armbands and ribbons that are the color teal that represent Sexual Self-Awerness Month, and some information about Verity that I'd like to pass out, if that's okay, to the councilmembers. Great. Thank you.
At this time, we will move to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion.
Excuse me, we can go with the presentation from the police department.
Oh, okay, the sheriff is here. We're gonna go ahead and, item 3D, Presentation of the Police Department Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor Cook, and members of the council. On behalf of- On behalf of Sheriff Steve Freitas, who I'm honored to say is in the audience this evening with us, along with the members of the Sonoma Police Department, I would be pleased to present to you our annual report for 2014. This report reflects the hard work, dedication, and tireless efforts of the men and women of our department. And before I get started on the numbers, I would like to remind the council and the audience of our mission statement, which states, "In partnership with our community, we commit to provide firm, professional, firm, fair, and compassionate law enforcement services with integrity and respect. And while we are not perfect, I commit to you that we will strive each day to live up to those standards in every contact that we have with our community." Last year, I reported an increase in crime, but I'm glad to say we enjoyed a double-digit decrease in our overall crime rate in 2014. Our violent crime rate fell 11%, and our property crime rate fell by 22%. As I've said previously, crime rates provide a very simple snapshot of our community, and while I caution against comparing crime rates from one community to another due to its simplicity, Sonoma regularly falls below the statewide average for crime, which reflects what I think we all know: Sonoma is a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. Our clearance rates, which represent those crimes that are solved by arrest and/or other exceptional means, continue to outpace the clearance rates for the western states, which I think reflects a diligent follow-up, robust investigation, and most importantly, a strong community involvement, since many of our crimes are solved by information that we receive from our very own citizens. In 2014, the number of people arrested in Sonoma was virtually unchanged from the previous year, but it should be noted that we did see an increase of nearly 14% in DUI arrests. DUI enforcement will continue to be a priority for us in 2014. And to that end, the department applied and received a $70,000 grant from the Office of Traffic Safety. Utilizing grant funds, we purchased a fully-equipped police motorcycle and other associated traffic enforcement equipment. In addition, we've sent several deputies to a variety of traffic-related training, and we will use the remainder of those funds, which expire in the fall of this year, specifically for enforcement operations targeting pedestrian safety and other high-incident intersections. In the spring of 2014, our school resource officer, Matt Regan, which many of you know, organized the Every 15 Minutes program at the Sonoma Valley High School. Unique in its design and powerful in its impact, Every 15 Minutes is an educational experience that reminds all of us of the dangers associated with driving while impaired and driving while intoxicated, or excuse me, while distracted. I'd like to remind you that this is National Distracted Driving Month as well. Our response time to our Priority One calls, which are the most serious of our calls, was up from the previous year. Unfortunately, I do not have an answer or an explanation for that increase, but I did note that the number of Priority One calls we responded to was up also this year. Our response time is calculated from the time the call is answered by a dispatch center and the time a deputy arrives on scene. Our response time is still very respectable, but it is something I hope to address in the coming year. There are many challenges ahead of us, as we continue to see the impact of AB 109, which is the state's prison realignment program. The county jail is full of inmates that would have previously been sent to the state prison, which leaves little room for our local offenders. As such, these local offenders are back in our community under various supervision models. Also, in the fall of 2014, you may have known that the California voters passed Proposition 47, which reduced most drug and property crimes to misdemeanors. I believe Proposition 47 does have the potential to drive up crime rates and put our community at risk. The good news is the Sonoma County Law Enforcement Chiefs Association is working collaboratively with our community partners to address and mitigate the impact of these significant changes to the California's criminal justice system. Our community service officers, who perform our animal care and control function, reported that animal-related calls for service were down this year, which is also indicative of the downturn in the number of animals that had been impounded. Pets Lifeline, which has been and continues to be a big part of the animal care and control system in the Sonoma Valley, and they've been a good partner to us through the years. Speaking of partnerships, we continue to have a strong working relationship with the Sonoma Valley Youth and Family Service Diversion Program. Last year, we referred 124 youthful offenders to the program, which represents a nearly 50% increase from the prior year. Absent our local diversion program, these kids and their parents would have found themselves in the quagmire of the criminal justice system. This program is funded equally by the sheriff and the city, which highlights our mutual commitment to provide innovative and community-based alternatives to the juvenile justice system. According to Cynthia Ashmore, our program coordinator, the majority of referrals were for alcohol and substance abuse, namely marijuana. In 2013, the City Council, as you recall, approved the addition of a patrol canine, which has quickly become our most popular and well-known crime fighter in the entire city. Dicky is a beautiful three-year-old Belgian Malinois/German Shepherd mix that has cross-trained in both narcotics and patrol operations. In 2014, the canine team had 45 patrol-related deployments that resulted in 12 suspect surrenders. Without our canine team, these suspect apprehensions could have resulted in the use of force encounter, which would have put our deputies and the suspect at risk of injury. Our canine team also had 52 narcotic-related deployments, resulting in the seizure of 138 pounds of marijuana, 2 grams of cocaine, 1 gram of heroin, and over $14,000 in cash from illegal drug sales. Our canine team completed over 320 hours of training, made numerous appearances at community events and school functions, and, as I said, quickly has proven themselves to be a valuable community asset. I have the opportunity to thank, or remind you, that Sheriff Freitas agreed to fund the startup costs for our canine program, which I believe reaffirms the value he places on public safety in Sonoma Valley and the commitment to providing the highest caliber law enforcement services to the city of Sonoma. We continue to have an amazing cadre of our dedicated volunteers who assist us on literally a daily basis, with a variety of duties from parking enforcement, traffic control, special events, and administrative tasks. Last year, our volunteers graciously gave us well over 2,000 hours of volunteer time. I'm also happy to report just last week that Volunteer Joyce Bauer, who is assigned to the Police Department, was selected as Volunteer of the Year for the entire Sheriff's Office. And if I can kind of tout a little bit, if you recall, the year before Volunteer Eileen Adams, who's also from the Police Department, was selected last year, and the year before that was Volunteer Barry Cumberford, who also is at the Police Department, signed. So three years in a row for the Police Department, which I think in sports terms is considered a hat-trick. Our volunteers are truly a force multiplier in terms of our ability to provide exemplary community service to our community. In closing, I would like to thank the City Council for all their support and leadership, and to publicly acknowledge the great work done by city staff. They truly are a group of dedicated professionals. I look forward to another successful 2016. This hereby concludes my report, but with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I would like to invite the sheriff up to the podium.
Yes, please. Great.
I wanted to take the time to come out tonight, although I know some of you, I haven't met all of you. I wanted to introduce myself and at least put a face to a name. I also wanted to just take this chance to thank the council and city staff and the citizens of Sonoma for the continued collaboration with the Sheriff's Office. As you all know, the city of Sonoma as an independent jurisdiction is very much integrated with the county community around it. It's called the Valley, and when people say the Valley, they mean the entire valley, the city, and the area around it. And I think the collaboration is very important, and I want to applaud you for that. I think it does lead to more efficient government, the more things that we can do together. Brett mentioned some specific things where the Sheriff's Office has helped the city acquire some things that maybe it would not have been able to do without that collaboration. I also just want to take this chance to compliment Brett on the job he does. I hear throughout the county, in my travels, and it's a large county, I can assure you, almost universally, how well Brett works here in Sonoma, how accessible he is, and that's not only a credit to Brett, but it's a credit to the entire staff at the Police Department and the support that he gets from the city. So I think things are going well. However, I will agree with Brett, we're not perfect. We don't think we're perfect. We don't always think we're right. So if there's some way that we can serve you better, I'm sure that Brett can handle that situation. But if for any reason you ever want to talk to me as the sheriff, or meet with me, or ask questions, I'm absolutely here for you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the council?
I actually have a couple of questions. Chief, may I ask you a couple of questions? I didn't pick this up, but I think you discussed drug seizures.
Yes.
And possibly monies that were involved. So it's probably a county task force that works on that? So if there are funds that come out of drug seizure, does it go to the department, or is it, and then divvied up to a local agency? How does that work?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different methods. It is identified in the contract that we have with the city, the counting city, but in essence, funds that are seized in the city of Sonoma by city staff will come almost universally back to the city. If the city asset is used outside of the city and there's a seizure, that'll go through a process where it'll be divvied up, in essence, according to a formula that's been pre-established.
Thank you. Also, you mentioned AB 109 and Proposition 47. Oh, sorry. AB 109 and Proposition 47. And the unfortunate thing, of course, is the impact it's having on counties. However, I don't, possibly you can elaborate on this, but the shortcoming of these is that there's nothing available for people, programs, to keep them, you know, away from drugs and out of trouble. So I think that's really unfortunate, and the impact is on you and citizens. So I'm not aware of anything that's available either locally or statewide, and maybe I'm incorrect.
I think there is some programs that are coming down the pipe, yeah, and the sheriff is far more familiar with kind of what's going on at the county level, but there are, I think, some funding that hopefully will be coming our way. We've got our fingers crossed, but I'll be happy to let the sheriff address it.
Fortunately or unfortunately, I am very versed on realignment, the good parts and the bad parts. There is a tremendous amount of programming that is available, and I would encourage any of you who are interested, it's your county jail, I just run it for you. We actually spend more money, the realignment money, what comes to Sonoma County every year is about $10 million. If you notice, there was an article in the paper Sunday that said they used $10 million for law enforcement. That's not true. It's $10 million for the entire county. The Sheriff's Office gets roughly about $2.5 million of that $10 million, and over 50% of that is used for programming in the jail. Starting Point, which is drug diversion and prevention programs, numerous other. We're doing through Child Parent Institute. We are doing parenting classes, so that hopefully that cycle, generational cycle of in custody, we stop that, we're doing GED programming. So we're spending a tremendous amount of money, over $1 million, on direct programming, primarily for drug stuff, but for parenting things also, and then detention alternatives. So for example, we've got about 60 people out on ankle bracelets from the jail, otherwise being in the jail, which is very expensive, and 90% of those people either attend school full-time or work full-time, so they're still involved in their community. So I don't want to disagree with you that there is no programming, otherwise just point out there is a tremendous amount of programming. We also pay for housing for people who can't have housing, because homelessness, with people who have criminal records, it's very hard for them to succeed on probation and things, so we provide money for housing, job sharing, numerous things, and I'd be happy to talk with you more about that sometime. I don't want to take up your whole meeting.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gallion?
Yes, and of course, I would be remiss if I did not ask my questions as far as the schools were concerned, since that is always prevalent in my mind with, you know, my occupation and also our partnership here in our community with our schools. I would just like to say that the schools resource officer that we have currently, and that is also paid for, you know, as part of our program with the Sheriff's Department, is a working model, I feel, for how we can go ahead and we can be outreach-ing to our youth in a very approachable way. Would you speak a little bit more about any significance that you've had as far as, you know, helping with alcoholism and, you know, tobacco, anything of that nature, because these are issues we're coming forward with in future with the council?
Sure. So Deputy Regan, I think has just been, you're right, a model for the school resource officer program, and has certainly been well-received at the high school and with the district. He is one of these people who is always available to us when it comes to enforcement and identification. He knows more about the youth of the valley than I think any of us could ever imagine, oftentimes knows their parents, their location, and their family history, and so Matt has been just a tremendous asset to us. At the same time, he does provide role model services, right? He has several kids that he works with on their senior projects. He is the primary recruiter for us when it comes to our Explorer Post program, and has done a great job kind of taking kids who may have an interest in law enforcement and kind of funneling them our way, so we can kind of get them in the hook and keep them early in the profession. He provides, of course, the Every 15 Minutes program. He talks a lot about drug and alcohol issues. He works with the families on getting services when needed, works closely with the diversion program with Cynthia, to make sure that the kids get wrapped around services when possible and feasible. And he, like I said, has just been a tremendous asset. One of the things that we're doing is we are hoping to, we've applied for, and we're fairly hopeful that we'll get a grant next year from Alcohol Beverage Control to deal with kind of underage drinking issues. And Matt, of course, would be a big part of that, but really it's about kind of educating the public and educating our retail establishments about the perils of underage drinking, and really kind of providing some resources for them to be successful.
Thank you very much. An excellent representation in our community. I've always found his service to be outstanding.
Great, thank you.
The only thing I want to say is thank you. The canine unit, I saw that you talked a little bit about that. I don't know if the public's aware of, but Dicky does do presentations and different things, and he actually bit a ribbon for one of the local new stores and kind of outshoved the mayor on Sunday, but it's okay.
I will address it with him Monday morning.
Yes. He got it on the first shot, usually it takes me a couple. Well, thank you. And thank you, Sheriff, for being here. We do appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and go to the Consent Calendar. All items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Is there any council questions? Or comment?
I have one comment, and that is on the agenda, item 4B. There's a paper before you of my correction to the spelling of a word in the minutes itself, page 7 of 16. And the word is Bastions, not Sebastian's.
Is there any other council questions?
And I would like to ask that 4D and 4E be set aside.
Okay, is there any other council questions? At this point, I'll go out for a public comment.
4B, approval of the minutes.
This is for approval of the minutes, or you could pull an item off for discussion.
Yes.
Could you come to the...
I can discuss it now as pull for discussion. Just briefly on 4B, can I speak to it now? Do I need to pull it to speak to it?
Why don't you go ahead and pull it?
Okay.
Is there any other council, I mean, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go back to the council, and right now, is there any discussion and action on 4A, 4C, 4F, 4G, and 4H? Councilmember Huntley.
I will make an motion to approve items 4A, C, F, G, and H. Second?
City Clerk, we have, is there any more comments on those before we go for roll call vote? Seeing none, City Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Agromonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. So that'll take us to item 4B, Approval of Minutes of the April 6, 2015 Council, City Council Meeting. Is there any council questions?
We're going to 4B?
Yes, 4B. 4B was pulled. Seeing none up here, I'll go ahead and go out to public.
David Iker, 1110 Loma Court. I would just like to suggest that Councilmember Edwards, on 4B, have it updated to include the fact that he did mention that he was on the, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, because that is one of the requirements that makes it a non-interest for him. And, you know, just in case there's any further action, I'm not going to be filing a complaint to FPPC, but just in case anybody else does, he would be covered by the fact that it's included in the minutes.
Thank you, David. I'll bring, is there any other public comment on 4B? Seeing none, I will come back to council discussion and possible action, and action.
I will have to... I will have to excuse myself in this because I didn't attend that meeting for a vote, so I'll have to vote.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve item 4B.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Does your motion include amending the minutes to reflect the correction of the misspelling as well as to identify that Mr. Councilman Edwards declared that he was a member of the chamber?
Maybe I should let Mr. Edwards speak on that amendment.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should add that. I think it's appropriate, and when we belong to an organization, we need to divulge that.
All right, then I would make a second to, do we have to go back to the first?
You made the motion, did you not?
No.
Oh, did I?
Yes, she did.
I didn't make it.
Then you can ask the second or if you would, the second would accept a friendly amendment. Will you accept?
Okay, good.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. If we can go ahead and get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Abstain.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
And for public, that was a vote on the approval of the minutes of the April 6, 2015 City Council Meeting with having Councilmember Edwards noted that he is a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
And my amendment.
And the Vice Mayor's amendment. With that, we're going to go ahead and go to 4D, Approval and Ratification of Appointment of Inga Hutzel to the Community Services and Environmental Commission for a two-year term. Is there any Council questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go out to public. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and come back for Council discussion and action.
So I want to bring up the same issues that we had at our last meeting. I left after our last meeting and headed to Chicago, so I have not been in town, but I believe that based on the same information that we had last, last time on this item agenda and the one, the one coming up, that we need to create some other avenue. Based on my perception of how the selections were made, we also had a person drop off at CSCC that we appointed last time, and I'm surprised that we didn't garner the information that that person was leaving town. I checked with the City Clerk today, and that applicant and that person that was appointed decided to leave town. So I'm not sure why we weren't able to ascertain that out of that interview process. And I feel in a lot of ways that the interview process is, with 15 minutes, it's very difficult. It's like three minutes with these buttons. 15 minutes to get, to appoint somebody to a position is, is difficult. And I think that, as I stated in our last meeting, that I believe that we need to maybe put forward, and I'm not sure how the city attorney feels about it, but I would like to, I'd be absolutely volunteer to recuse myself from the planning position and ask that the mayor do the same and have a re-interview process for both positions at this point.
Do we have any other Council discussion?
I did view the video, so I'm aware of the meeting, but I, may I ask the attorney, the issue here is the approval and ratification of the appointment of this person. It's, I see this as two things. This is just the appointment issue, but the issue of the process, is this part of what we're doing here?
It is not.
Okay.
But the Council has the power by a majority of vote to put that item on a future agenda, but it cannot act on it tonight.
Okay. But I appreciate the comments, but it doesn't have anything to do with 4D at this point.
Is there, Councilmember Huntley?
For this particular item, I wanted to postpone since Ms. Aggermonte was not here, and I wanted to hear, in your opinion, why this person was nominated. And then also, as part of the larger discussion, I would like for us to have a Council-wide discussion about the process for these interviews and so. I don't know if that means that I don't want to vote on this person and I want to wait until we talk about it, or perhaps depending on what you said, maybe we can go ahead in this one, but.
Yeah. Councilmember Aggermonte, would you like to answer the question? Because you were on the interview process.
I was. I was. Again, I guess it slips out of what we're doing here tonight to want to discuss the process again.
Well, right now, all we're talking about is the ratification of these nominations.
And that's what I'm, the point I'm making, and I guess, Councilmember Huntley, I thought maybe you were addressing the issue again of the process, which I agree, there probably should be a revisit of that, but we're really, I think my opinion was, we're just here to look at this position. And maybe I'm wrong, and I apologize.
Yeah, no, what I'm looking for is specifically about this particular person, because you are the other interviewer. If you could speak to why this particular person was nominated, then that would give me the information I'm looking for.
All right, thank you. Well, as I remember from the video, is that what we call them? DV, I don't know what we call them now, but as I remember from the video, the only issue was that Ms. Hutzel lived on the same block as the mayor. There wasn't any objection to any of her experience or any of those things. It was just that she lived on the same block, which I think is a good question. However, in my mind, I don't think it's relevant, so I feel very comfortable in making, you know, making some kind of decision on that.
Okay. Councilmember Huntley?
Yeah, just to follow up. My experience was that last weekend, or last week, when I asked about the qualifications, the only thing I learned about her was that she was a Realtor. I have now since seen her application, so it was, it was more about the specific qualities and experiences she had that would make her a good candidate for this.
And aside from that, I agree with you.
Vice Mayor Gallion, do you have?
I have no questions.
Do you want to make, so I guess, I'll speak, since I'm the one that made the nomination. We interviewed four individuals, and yes, we did pick one individual that has moved out of the city. It was unexpected. I called him and talked to him because I wanted to make sure that, that what was his reasoning of not going forward, and it was, it was a personal issue, and he ended up moving out of the city. But during the interview process, he had actually been, he had actually been an applicant before for commissions, so I wanted to answer that. So do we have a motion?
And may I add to that, because he never said he was, I mean, it was never mentioned.
Yeah, it was.
Maybe you want to save him that embarrassment, but we would, obviously, he should have just dropped out, so I'm, I think that's unfortunate. We were put in that situation.
Councilmember Edwards?
But that also goes to the quantity and the quality of interviews. Not saying that you're not good interviewers, but, you know, sometimes with just a short period of time to schedule interviews, I mean, I remember my, one of the people who pointed me to a Citizens Advisory Commission is in the audience, and I, and I think the interview lasted over an hour. So, I mean, that's, that's my point. My point is not, it's not anything personal with the individuals in any way, shape, or form. It's about the process and how we're doing this, because these positions are so very important that I feel that we need to spend a little more time on them. As I mentioned earlier with these buttons, which I will go on record that I don't agree with them, but it's, we need to spend more time. We have important issues going on, and we have to be thinking that direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Huntley?
I have a question for the city attorney. So my question for either the mayor or Ms. Aggermonte about wanting to know the reasons why they picked that person, does that follow under, fall under what's on the agenda, or is that a separate thing?
No, you can ask them why they have recommended this particular person.
Okay. So I am asking specifically, which no one's given the reasons yet, other than she's a Realtor, why this particular person was picked.
I'll answer that. I actually said, it was irrelevant to me that she lived on the mayor's block, and you said, you said, now that you've seen her, I'm sorry, now that you've seen her application, that, you know, you've seen certain things, and those are the same things I saw, and I agree that there are things that, I think she has some good qualities that would be really accepted, acceptable for this commission. So I'm very happy about that.
So we're at Council discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, do we, do we have a motion, or has anyone made a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this position. I'm sorry, to approve this appointment of.
Is there a second?
I will second.
If there's not any more, any other discussion, I'll go ahead and call the City Clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntley?
No.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
Just for public to understand, we just approved the ratification of the appointment of Inga Hutzel to the Community Services and Environment Commission for a two-year term. With that, and it was a three to two vote. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to 4E, which is the Approval and Ratification of the Appointment of Mike Coleman to the Planning Commission for a two-year term. Is there any Council questions?
Yeah, for the same reasons, I feel that we, and I'll, I'll say it again, that I don't believe that there was enough time, and I think that the fact that the, there wasn't a consensus of two of us in the room, that I feel that it really should be opened up to the entire Council. Because if, if there's a disagreement at that level, we had candidates that have attended numerous meetings and their vast experience, that I just believe that it needs to be opened up. And again, I would recuse myself from a further vote and have the remaining Council members re-interview the candidates.
Is there any other Council questions before we go to public? With that, I'll go ahead and go to public. Is there any members of the public that would like to?
Larry Barnett, Fifth Street East. I just want to point out that from a historical standpoint, at least during my term of office, the process was, as I've heard it somewhat described here, which was that the mayor and one other member of the Council would interview the candidates and would jointly decide on who would be put forward for a nomination to the position. It was always a joint decision. I made a lot of appointments when I was on the Council, participated in a lot of the interviews, and it, sometimes it was a bit of a back and forth and sort of a negotiation between myself and the other interviewer. We would have preferences or feelings, but essentially, we had to come to an agreement about it, and that ultimately was the name that came forward.
Thank you, Larry. Rosemary?
Rosemary Pedrons, 8437 Second Street West. Is this the Mike Coleman that is the fire who wants to be on the Planning Commission or that Dave Cook recommended? Am I doing this right?
Yes.
Is this what I'm talking about?
That's the item that we're on is 4E.
Okay. Well, I haven't been here for a couple months. I know, I go on to Sue and Susan Gorman at Broadway Market when they did the mural. She thought, I'm great. I talk too damn much, you guys know that. But Gary Edwards and Rochelle, you recommended him, Dave, and they said, no, he's a fireman just doing what it is. And he's been taking classes to be on the Planning Commission. Okay. Gary Edwards was not a Planning Commission. He was a cheese man. Gary, I love you. We did the hole, we saved the hill, Rosewood. I'm going back umpteen years, but excuse me, this really ticks me off. If David recommended this fireman and he's taken classes, goddamn it, let him be put into the commission. You guys really crazed me, and I've lived here 69 years, and I'm sick of this. Shape up, get a life, goddamn it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary, but let's not have any swearing in the Council chambers. We'll continue on public comment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Cook and City Council Members. My name is Bob McDonald, and I was recently appointed in February by the City Council as alternate planning commissioner. I live at 454 Third Street West in Sonoma, and I wanted to thank you for taking the time to discuss the current planning commission appointment. I wanted to briefly address the Council to introduce myself, relate my personal experience during this appointment process, and express my continued desire to be considered for the position as planning commissioner if it's not filled tonight. Many of the Council members have already known me from my service on the Historic Preservation and Design Review Commission, or may remember me from addressing you on items on the planning commission or City Council agendas. I've resided in Sonoma for the past 15 years. I currently own two small businesses, a vacation rental business and a small residential landscape design business. My educational background is an undergraduate degree in city and urban planning. I have postgraduate degrees as a public administrator, and also have a postgraduate degree in landscape architecture. I've served as a planning assistant, urban planner, project director of capital improvements, and managed government commissions, advisory bodies, and boards for nearly 20 years. I formally got involved in Sonoma City Government as a voluntary worker when I was appointed to the Historic Preservation and Design Review Commission, where I served three consecutive appointments until being termed out this last March. I apologize for not attending the last City Council meeting of April 6 in 2015 where the discussion of the new appointment to the commission was considered. I was out of town on a previously planned vacation. If I had clearer understanding of the appointment and the desire to select someone other than the alternate as a permanent commissioner, I would have taken the opportunity as your alternate commissioner to express my continued interest in filling the permanent planning position as commissioner. I was made aware of an additional round of interviews for the commissioner position by being copied on an email in late March, which to me seemed to be directed to applicants who had not yet applied for or were rejected during the first round of interviews for the planning commissioner and alternate positions. Given the, I thought vague wording of the email itself, me already being appointed to the commission as an alternate, and now actively serving on the commission as a temporary replacement for an early vacancy, I was given the impression that this email and its contents was rather directed to those that may have wanted to serve as a future alternate or a future commission. If it would have been made clear to me in my interview process that there would be two separate interviews, one for each full commissioner's position, or directly somebody letting me know as the alternate that I needed to also reapply for the second position, and that there was a departure from the traditional practice of nominating the alternate to the recent commissioned position, I would have clearly put my name on this new list and as an interested party and to be considered again. I have the utmost respect for what decisions your Council does make this evening regarding this appointment. As an alternate to the planning commission, I do however, want to express my desire to be continued, considered for the permanent role of planning commissioner in the event Michael Coleman's appointment is not approved. I believe that the city of Sonoma is at a crossroads, and that many complicated land use and policy decisions will need to be addressed by the planning commission and City Council in the foreseeable future.
You have about five more seconds.
Yes. And given the opportunity to conserve the city as, not as an alternate, but as a permanent commissioner, and share my background consistently with the Council and the commission, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening. Rachel Ballow, 822 Second Street West, and I was an applicant for this position. And I would certainly suggest that the Council revisit how commission interviews are done. I totally agree, 15 minutes was not enough time for anyone to get to know an applicant's background. And the application itself is so short, it gives us no opportunity to really tell you too much about our background. I also would suggest that coming to City Council meetings is not the only way we, as citizens, are involved in our government. I think for over 40 years, I've watched design review, planning, City Council meetings on TV. I'm sorry. When I worked, I didn't always come down to the courthouse because I worked in one, and at the end of the day, I just wanted to go home. But I would ask Council to revisit it. A lot of people are new to Sonoma. I certainly am one of them, but I think you have a lot of good talent out here, and I think that you should have the opportunity to further explore that. the opportunity to further explore that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Councilor Barnett, Mayor Cook, fellow council members. Thank you for revisiting this agenda item from last, from two weeks ago. As I said then, and as I would like to reiterate tonight, the planning commission is the most important unelected body in the city of Sonoma. And so, any appointment to this commission, I think, needs to be taken very seriously. I would also echo the earlier comments and Councilman Edwards' comments about the 15-minute interview as a participant in the process. It's just really not enough time to really learn about the person and their vision for Sonoma. When Councilwoman Gallion interviewed me for design review, I believe our interview went over an hour as well. So, that's an important thing to consider when you consider the process. But more important, the planning commission is the most important commission in Sonoma because land use is very complicated. It's a very complicated issue, and it all boils down to quality of life. The decisions that planning commissioners make, whether it's approving new developments or whether it's different elements of the general plan or UGB, et cetera, it all comes down to quality of life. And specifically, in our wonderful little town, the sort of age-old balance between visitors and locals. And so, these are very complicated issues. And so, I think experience is important for the planning commission. At the last meeting, Mayor Cook, you, after I spoke, you sort of yelled and you said that the qualification for the planning commission is to be a resident of Sonoma. And I believe in this municipal code, you're right, but in general, I disagree, and here's why. In this municipal code, the qualifications for DRC, which is a subcommittee of the planning commission, it's sort of an inferior commission, and oftentimes, like on Mission Square, they take responsibilities from us because they're a superior commission. In the municipal code, it says, "The members of the commission shall include persons who have demonstrated special interest, competence, experience, or knowledge in the following areas: historic preservation, cultural geography, or other historic preservation-related disciplines; architecture and architectural history; prehistoric and historic archaeology; urban planning; landscape architecture or related disciplines, to the extent such persons are available; Community Services and Environment Commission, another inferior commission to planning commission, which is the most important commission in Sonoma." In the municipal code, "The city council may choose to appoint qualified applicants who have professional background, expertise, or education in one or more of the following areas: landscape architecture, recreation, planning, or management; resource or habitat conservation; hazardous materials management; environmental education; agriculture; alternative energy production or related field." So, I don't think it's a huge logical jump to conclude that for inferior commissions, the planning commission, which have detailed distilled qualifications in the municipal code, that there should be some sort of qualification for planning commission beyond just resident of Sonoma. Or, as you said, I picked Mike Coleman because I believe being a firefighter, doing stuff that he wants to do in the building, and he's a resident, and he has two kids, he's married, et cetera, I think, I think, you know, to respect the commission, it needs to be more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Edwards?
So, to address Ms. Pedrenzini, I worked with Rosemary on the Measure A project, but I actually interviewed to be on the SVCAC. And I probably could have just gone to Ig Vella. He's in the cheese business too, but he was also first district supervisor and spent many, many years on SVCAC and various other planning, I believe he was on the planning commission. His mother was on the planning commission in Sonoma. So, they were kind of my family in, in learning about the city of Sonoma. And I've only been here for 23 or 24 years now, and I got quite a knowledge. Those were my classes that I went to, and I'd be very interested to see where these planning commission classes are that the applicant's going to, because I think that'd be a great thing for everybody who wants to be on a commission to go to those classes. You know, my, my concerns are about the qualifications. And we had Ms. Ballow, who's a retired federal judge. I know she's a really good listener, because that's what federal judges do. We had another woman who's an attorney, works with senior, senior care issues and so on. And she actually has attended over 10 planning commissions. And I don't know how many she watched on television, but that's, that's, it's really great that we have our KSBY television opportunity for people to get involved. My, I'm glad my kids aren't watching tonight because of the language that you use, Rosemary. I, I, it's, it's, you know, I know it brings up issues, but when you talk about firemen, my grandfather was a fire captain in Santa Ana. And he retired from the fire department. They did a lot of work for the community. My father was not a fireman. He was in the food business as well, but he did a lot for the community as well. I've always been a community volunteer, goes back many, many generations. Back to my great-grandfather, who fought in World War I, directed the Veterans Administration in Orange County. So, I have a long history of, of community service and so on. And my, my concern with this and is I left the meeting and went to Chicago on the 12:30 AM flight, and I got an email from somebody, and it showed the newspaper saying that Jimmy Stewart wouldn't be able to get this job. But Jimmy Stewart's dead. So, I would hope that we wouldn't be supporting somebody like Jimmy Stewart to be on the, the planning commission. I just, I just feel like a decision was made before the interviews were done or complete. There was really no deliberation. And I feel it's the wrong message to the community that it's a perk for somebody, because you happen to be mayor, you're still just one-fifth of this group. And I just feel it's the wrong message to our community. And I'm going to stick with my feeling on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Hunley?
Thank you. I'm actually recovering from a terrible bout of food poisoning this morning, so I wrote my comments down. So, I apologize for reading. But going back to last meeting, I had asked for an explanation as to why Mr. Coleman was nominated, because there appear to be a disparity in qualifications and experience related to the matters addressed by the commission. I asked if there was relevant information about Mr. Coleman that wasn't readily apparent in the application, and I didn't find the explanation behind the nomination to be adequate. During those last two rounds of interviews for this planning commission positions, I believe we had around 17 applicants, many of whom had careers in building and planning, some served on other planning commissions, other commissions here, and even the city council. And additionally, as Mr. Edwards already mentioned, there was at least two very qualified women applicants. A truly diverse perspective that has been missing from the planning commission for, I think, at least a decade. The planning commission requires detailed understanding of building codes, parking blueprints, and other specific skills. And a planning commissioner has to have the knowledge to make suggestions to a developer. I'm not saying that there's no place for a person who doesn't work in a related field, but if they don't, they certainly need to be willing to go to the meetings for the, before applying for the planning commission. And for someone who doesn't already have this kind of intimate knowledge about these subjects, the appropriate place for them to start would be as an alternate. And right now, there exists an alternate who is highly qualified, who is inexplicably passed over with his nomination. As someone had already mentioned, we have two other commissions that either have suggested attributes they're looking for or one that's even required. So, why would these commissions prefer certain qualifications, but a planning commissioner can be selected because he doesn't have specific expertise in a related field, which is what we, what I heard last week? So, there appears to be a problem with the process. This is apparent through the fact that a qualified alternate was passed over, that a woman was nominated during the last four nominations despite having multiple highly qualified women apply, and the lack of experience was listed as a reason for the nomination. And there also seems to be confusion over why the mayor is the person who gives the nomination and what the person of the second viewer is. Is it a perk that comes with a title, as some suggest at the last meeting? Or is it a delegated power for the sake of efficiency with a check and balance by having a second interviewer? So, for this reason, I do not think that this nomination is appropriate for the commission. And I also would like for us to come back in the future and talk about the process. And even if that means that we end up keeping it exactly the way it is, I think it's really important for everyone to understand why it is. And so, that the people that are picked reflect, you know, the whole council and not just specifically one person.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunley. Councilmember Aggermonte?
Thank you. You know, it's interesting. First of all, I'd like to address Ms. Ballow. I'd like to say thank you. I think you mentioned about it, you know, it's not, it's not a requirement to attend meetings. So, it's kind of interesting, when I first ran for city council in another city, served 12 years, when I would go to candidate nights, that's the first thing they ask me. "Have you been to any meetings?" "No," but when I get elected, I will. And so, you know, I, we're so lucky to watch these things on television. If you're not viewed here in the meeting room, you know, that's really something. I was not part of the interview process. I did see the applications. They were all excellent. Let me see. You know, I serve on the Sonoma County, I always have to close my eyes with acronyms, Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. And on this agency, I ask, you know, I did a little quick survey of three to four cities, and they choose in any different way. You know, where I came from, we actually had our own designated appointment for every committee. Each council member had their own designated appointment. And that, some of that is similar here in the county. And they were actually shocked at how many people applied, because, you know, they said they were beating the bushes for people to apply. I think it was Cattotti, a couple other cities, they were saying this. And, and, you know, with all due respect, with respect to Mr. McDonald, I actually spoke to him today, which I'm very happy, because it puts a different spin on this. But he was not passed over because he wasn't even considered, because his application was not in it, was not in there, so he is not, and I was not aware of that. I looked at the, you know, files, but for some reason, he assumed that when you're an alternate, that you don't have to interview again for this next position. And possibly, the mayor as well was not aware of that. But I, you know, I think it sort of puts another spin on this whole choice. So, I mean, those are just the comments I have. So, I don't want, I would love the public, I would, I compel the public to understand that the alternate was not passed over. It was, it had nothing to do with that. His application was not part of the process. Why or how that happened, I'm, I don't know, but I just thought we should understand and perhaps...
Thank you.
That's my understanding.
Councilmember Edwards?
Actually, I was in the interview process, and all applications were on the table. So, anybody who had interviewed before was considered for part of that, provided they decided to do that.
So, you're saying that Mr. McDonald's application...
Everyone who, everyone who interviewed was part of the process. That was my understanding.
Well, I didn't know that. Okay, I didn't know that. Thank you for explaining that.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, I talked to quite a few people this afternoon. As a matter of fact, my phone was nonstop. And it was about this issue and other issues that have come forward tonight or will be coming forward tonight. I feel that the, the alternate position does need to be revisited in consideration as to what we are going to do as a process. I don't know that now is the time, that this is the situation to consider it. The bell has been rung, so to speak, announcing that an individual has been up here for ratification. I do not, and I have not experienced anything to this depth of talking about the qualifications of one fellow Sonoma against another, and why they should be disqualified or qualified for that particular position. I was not part of 17 or 22 interviews for this particular position. For the expediency of time, I know that we would not allow an hour for each one of those applications. That process would take a while to go ahead and fulfill. I know that we have an issue with sequencing. We have had so many vacancies on this particular planning commission. I feel that there are extenuating circumstances that have led up to this particular decision. Now, the question that remains here tonight is, are we telling this person who is up here for review that he is not eligible to be on the planning commission as a commissioner? And that is what I am waiting to see everyone vote on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Edwards?
So, it's not between one person and another. We have many, many candidates. It's not about one person's qualifications over the other. It's just we have an outstanding field of applicants. Period.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go ahead and speak. I'm the one who made the nomination, and I stick by what I said the last meeting. I feel that I, I made the, the proper decision. And I look at my colleagues on the council for ratification. I do believe that if there is something that the council wants to, at some point, take a look at the, of changing this process, I think, I think it'd be great. But I think tonight, and as I spoke last meeting, is we are here, it is on our agenda. I will answer any questions, why I picked him. And it's the one thing that, I read the newspaper like everybody else. And he's a fireman. Fireman, no buildings. I was a volunteer fireman. But I've heard some comments about architects, people that really know. My decision on a lot of, a lot of the commissions is based on the fact, people that care for Sonoma and people that want to, like Madeline or Councilmember Aggermonte said, I've talked to other cities. They don't have people putting their name up and putting themselves out here. And I probably see why, because this may have happened to them or in these other cities, and these council members, you know, don't, don't realize that when, when you interview and you're told that you're not good enough, you're not good enough to be a citizen of Sonoma and make decisions based on, you know, where you live, that just doesn't make sense. I think commissions is community involvement. I went for a couple of commissions when, and I, and I didn't get it, but I didn't call... It's okay. But I didn't, I didn't call foul, because I knew that those, the mayor had made another decision and it got ratified by the council. But I will mention the 15-minute, because it was, it was kind of funny that it came up, because I actually sat through, Gary, I think we sat through 22. I think both processes of the planning commission are the interviews. And actually, I felt myself in a couple of the interviews where the 15 minutes was plenty of time. I don't think that if, if I would have felt that I needed to revisit anyone, I would have, I, I would have, you know, tried to take a little bit more time or go back to the city clerk and say, "Hey, we need, we need to get everybody to come back." And the reason that we did not open it back up for interviewing everyone is we, we had the new ones come in and we knew of the older ones. So, I do want to say that, that the alternate that got ratified did not get passed over. You know, that's, that's one thing that I just want to be clear. Tonight, we are here to do one thing. Ratify or not ratify the nomination of the mayor for a planning commission. So, I guess at this point, I am looking for...
Another comment?
Councilmember Edwards?
I think part of your, your discussion has been about, "I interviewed, and I did this, and I did that." It wasn't about, "We did that." And part of my frustration with this is that nobody's saying that the applicant's not a good citizen of Sonoma or anything else. But, you know, I can't just go jump on a fire truck and fight a fire. I mean, you have to learn, you have to train. I spent eight years on SVCAC, and I sat there and I listened for the first three or four years. And then I got involved, and I chaired that commission twice. So, when I came to the, when I interviewed for the planning commission in Sonoma, I had to run for city council just so I could get appointed to the planning commission, because I was turned down for planning commission. So, I mean, that's, you know, I, I earned my stripes. And, and I worked toward it, and, no, I'm not a building expert. I am a cheese person, but I do lots of other things as well. And it has nothing to do with qualifications of somebody being a citizen. And I resent the fact that you bring that up, saying that, that we're determining he's not a good citizen. Of course, he's a good citizen. He's a firefighter, he's retired here, has kids. I mean, it's great. But it has nothing, it's nothing personal in any way, shape, or form.
Councilmember Hunley?
Yeah, I just have a question. So, the first, the first seat that was filled when you guys moved up the alternate, did that person apply and interview? I think the first, the first time the alternate was moved up, there wasn't like public interviews. It was just the one seat that was moved up.
We actually, well, we had, what we had is Ron Welllander and McDonald, Robert McDonald, got appointed because we had a vacancy... got appointed, because we had a vacancy of, I'd have to remember, because there's been, there's, there's been a multi, there's, there's been a multitude of, of seats.
Our alternate moved up, that was, I think, I believe, our first meeting in December, correct me if I'm wrong, David? I mean, our first, as a council, we moved our alternate into a full position.
Did he apply and get interviewed to get moved up?
He was presented, I'm not sure how the process went, but he was presented to, I believe...
He did, well, oh, yeah, you're talking about crib.
Yeah, James Crib, I believe you presented him as to move up.
James Crib moved from...
And I'm saying, before he was moved up, did he apply, and was he interviewed to move from alternate to regular seat?
No, he automatically, or, no, he had to get, yeah, that's, that's a, that, that was a, that was a call that...
So, that time it was automatic, but this time it's not?
It's not automatic. No, it's not automatic.
Okay. I'm just confused as to why, why that worked that way.
That one, that one went from, that was on, that was on, that would have been on the consent counter, and it was a nomination by the council, and nobody, nobody pulled it off for separate discussion. So, James Crib did get moved, moved up. And then Bob Felder got reappointed by the mayor also, because I think that he had, because he had come up on that one. And that, they all go on consent calendars, and then they get ratified.
Commissioner Felder was not termed out, and that's why he, he reapplied. He was asked if he was interested, and he was...
Yes, and wait, just, just ask me permission before you speak, please, Edwards.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And it's, does staff have a question? So, I guess I'm looking for, yes.
I just wanted to clarify the point, because it's confusing to me whether Bob McDonald was actually like a consideration for being moved up with in the past, no questions asked, it was placed on the consent calendar to make the alternate the new seat.
No, I, and I could...
Whereas this time, it's sounding like he had to proactively do something that alternates in the past have not had to do.
No, and that's, and that's, and that's not true.
That was my mistake.
Yeah, and that's not...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and no, and that...
That was my mistake, that I stated that.
And that's, and that's not true. The, what happens is, at, when the mayor, the mayor, and I think that's what we got away from it at the last meeting, the mayor makes what I would say, a recommendation. You know, it's a nomination, but it's a recommendation. Go through the whole process, and, believe me, I take this process as serious as anybody on this, on this council. And I really feel that I, that this nomination, and the reason I say "me" on the nomination is be, and that's what I tried to say in the meeting the other day, is the mayor makes the nomination. And I believe 100% in my heart that the right person was picked on, on this, on this commission. And I will tell you, right now, we have other commissions that need to be filled, and I, once we finish all this, we'll have to, we'll have to discuss, you know, where we're going with commissions. But since I have public's ear, I do want people to come out for these commissions. And I apologize that we're sitting here airing one individual's name, and I'm sure it's embarrassing to him and his, and his family, because I remember being in the council, sitting right over there, when the older council was trying to discuss how they could change this process. Well, they never changed the process, because like, like Madeline Agamonte said, some city councils actually bring the, they do the interview right there. I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if that's good or bad, but I know that, I know that that's a process, but I know that that council at the time said, no, we don't want to do that. We don't want to put individuals in that, you know, through that whole interview process, because there's a lot of questions that are being asked. So, I'm just here asking for council direction and action on 4E. Council, or Vice Mayor Gallion.
I would like to go ahead and move for the approval and ratification of the appointment of Mike Coleman to the planning commission for a two-year term.
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion before we go to a roll call vote?
I'd like to, I'm seconding. I'll hold my comments, thanks.
Uh, city clerk, can we do a roll call vote on 4E?
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
No.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. And for public to understand, we just approved the eradication, ratification of the appointment of Mike Coleman to the planning commission for a two-year term. Council, or Vice Mayor Gallion.
Would, would it be out of order at this time to request that we have a future agenda item discussion, discussing alternates and perhaps commission appointments?
I, I would, well, yes, if the majority of the council wishes that to be done, then that can be done.
I would support, I would, I would definitely support that.
May I ask, oh, sorry, may I ask a question? Is it relevant or irrelevant to know what other councils do in Sonoma County?
Well, that would be part, if it came to a future agenda item, city staff would, would hear that.
If the council's interested in that information, that'll be supplied.
Thanks.
Yes, and I would like a full vetted discussion on the alternate positions.
And with that, I'm going to go ahead and take a five-minute break.
I'll call this meeting back to order, and our next item of business is consent calendar for the successor agency. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request, specific items be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Any questions?
Could I ask a question? Does, are we voting on that?
Yes.
Okay, because I would have to abstain.
Is there open public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and bring it back to Council Vice Mayor Gallion.
Approval of the, I move for approval of the portion of the minutes of April 6, 2015 city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency be passed.
I'll second.
Is there any other council discussion? We have a motion and a second. With that, I will call on the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Agamonte?
I have to abstain.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
Just for public approval of the portions of the minutes of April 6, 2015 city council meeting pertaining to the successor agents was a successful pass. We do not have any public hearing scheduled, so we are going to go into our regular calendar. Item 7A, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the removal and replanting of Broadway Street trees.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
On that one, due to proximity?
We will, Dan will hold off until he gets off the dice. And we will turn it over to Dan, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. The issue before you was deferred from the April 6 agenda, due to only three council meeting, meeting members being in attendance at that time. The reason this issue is before you is because three applications were brought to the city's tree committee to remove selected trees on Upper Broadway, being these red oak trees. Those, the tree committee met on January 15th. Two applications were considered. One application was approved for removal and replanting of street trees, pending the development of a replanting plan. The larger application from the meeting on the 15th was deferred to the following tree committee meeting on February 19th. And at that meeting, two other applications were considered, but the tree committee decided to refer those applications, or that request for removal and replanting, to the city council. And that's why we're here. Just to give you some quick background, although there's a little bit more background in the staff report, to the best of city's staff's recollection, plans were developed in 1991 for some improvements in the Upper Broadway area, which included wider sidewalks, bulbous for the crosswalks, landscape to median, some plaza enhancements, and some large stature trees. Those detailed plans were brought before council in 1991, but due to insufficient funding, council at that time did not approve funding that project. However, private funding came available in 1992 for the bulbous and the street trees. And that was approved by council. However, the trees, the red oak trees, were not planted with the root barriers as specified in the 1991 plans. The plans called for forty-eight root, forty-eight inch root barriers, and as far as staff can tell, there are no root barriers in there currently. Also, the trees were planted in small, about forty-eight inch by forty-eight inch planter areas, where the plans had called for about sixty-six inch by sixty-six inch planter areas, almost half the size as designed. Also, another variety of tree was planted, red oak trees, versus what was in the 1991 plans, which were to be ginkgos. Staff has noticed that there has been some sidewalk damage along this area. However, that, the sidewalk damage, the trip hazards, were repaired on the city's one-time trip hazard repair program, which has been continuing to this day. In fact, I'd like to also mention that over 1,900 trip hazards have been removed in the past two fiscal years. This program saw cut the trip hazards that were able to be saw cut, and however, the state streets and highway code, section 5610, does require that the abutting property owners make repairs for those trip hazards that are on the sidewalks abutting their property. So, those trip hazards that could not be repaired, we follow the process in the streets and highway code, which requires us to notify the property owner to make those repairs in a timely manner. Given that the abutting property owners are responsible for those repairs, not only to the sidewalks, but also to the trees and shrubs in the planter strip, which are considered part of the sidewalk, it seems reasonable to allow those property owners to remove the trees at their own cost, subject to a, up here in Upper Broadway, subject to a replanting plan, which staff believes can be developed in conjunction with the ongoing circulation element update. There have been some discussions with the planning commission about revising parking, and also some of the circulation in that area, in conjunction with a, with a specific plan of the circulation element. And also, any type of removal and replanting would be subject to Caltrans approval. So, the staff recommendation is to allow such tree removals and replanting, subject to a replanting plan and subject to Caltrans approval.
Thank you. Is there any council questions? Councilmember Hunley?
I have a question about the Caltrans approval. I see it says they have to approve the removal, but before the trees are removed, do they also have to approve the replanting plan? Caltrans?
Yes, most definitely. The plan that we would envision coming from the circulation element calls for a revision of parking and vehicular and bicycle and pedestrian circulation, so that would most definitely require Caltrans approval.
So, nothing would actually happen until all that's discussed and agreed on, and then it happens?
I would say at a minimum, it would be a year, maybe longer.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other council member questions, or vice mayor questions? With that, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment, and there was a request for a little over three minutes. City clerk?
How many?
Just set it for five. Well...
Thank you.
I'll, I'll time it.
You'll see, there's a photo up there, I'll talk about that in a moment. I'm up here as a proponent for keeping the trees and having the city develop a program to reimburse the property owners for the cost of any sidewalk repairs. And actually, your presentation regarding Arbor Day made all the arguments I could possibly make about retaining these trees. They've been growing there for 20 years. It was an outpouring of the community that produced this whole process and planted them there. It was the community's money that planted them there. It cost $300,000 then, and if the city is telling me it's now going to spend money to do a replanting plan and remove it, and get all the proposals in front of Caltrans and the studies, it's probably going to cost you $750,000 to $1 million to redo it. So, let's get practical about this. That's a heck of a lot more money than fixing the sidewalk and removing the burden from the property owners. Now, personally, if I were sitting up there with you, and as you know, I did for years, I would find it almost impossible to make this decision, even if I didn't have an opinion about the trees themselves, which I do. And why do I say that? Because the staff report's inadequate to actually make a decision. You don't have the information you need. For example, how much has the city spent on repairing the sidewalk? How many liability claims for injury have been filed and paid by our insurer because of trips or falls? What effect, if any, has the payment had on the city's premium? What is the estimated cost for a sawing correction of the sidewalk? What is the estimated cost for the average concrete replacement, and how many are anticipated? I mean, I was in business for 43 years. Who makes decisions without information? I mean, that's just crazy. Now, I want to talk about these trees. You can see from these pictures, these are all the various saw cuts that are on the sidewalk. And I just took these pictures walking home from, from Whole Foods the other day. You can see the edges are a little beveled. Here's the interesting thing about all of these photographs. All these repairs have taken place where there's absolutely no trees. What does that speak to? The fact is that sidewalks sink and lift, not necessarily because of trees, but because of all the various factors having to do with the original installation, the type of material, subsidence of the ground, water retention, water subsidence, all kinds of reasons. That's why you have all these spots that have been shaved, where there's not a tree in sight. We can't blame the trees for the sidewalks. Sidewalks are impermanent, and that's just the reality of it, they're going to need repair. Blaming the trees for all the problems with the sidewalks on Broadway is a specious argument. Think about what it takes to grow trees for 20 years. Think of the water that has been invested in those trees to get them to their current state. They don't need to be watered anymore, but you put new trees in there again, you're going to have to have an irrigation and watering plan in place for at least the first five years. I talked about the cost, it's ridiculous. And once you do get the information that frankly you need about what the projected cost of repairs might be over the next 10 years, compare that with the cost of the, of a replacement plan. What I'm arguing for is that you respect the historic intentions of the community. Don't destroy the beauty that has taken 20 years to develop. I was in the hospitality business here for 13 years. I never had anyone make a comment to me about how good repair they found our sidewalks. They talked about the beauty of Sonoma, and the quality that they perceived of the attention to the city. These trees were planted to improve the environment on Broadway, which frankly was a wasteland. The big discussion at the time was, how are we going to get pedestrians down this street that in a summer day where the temperature's 95 degrees and the blazing sun has been cooking on this pavement for the entire afternoon, are we going to get anybody to patronize these businesses? This was a program to improve the experience for the retailers on that street, and for the businesses. I don't think it's fair to impose the costs on them. I don't know how much we're talking about even, and neither do you, and that means that you really can't even make a decision tonight. And I think that you need to keep the priorities in order. Fix the sidewalks, and simply leave the trees alone. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to give you a copy of the questions that start at the bottom of this letter. I don't have copies for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Russert, and I'm the founder of Sonoma Birding, and we've had a nonprofit in town for about 10 years. I put together the tree map on the plaza, which is the self-guided tree tour, labeled all the trees in the plaza. With that map... With that map, and have an interest in this project, unbeknownst to me, I just happened to land here tonight for Arbor Day. First of all, I don't know much about what the Tree Committee is defined as in terms of birds. I'm here to speak on behalf of birds and trees. John Muir, of which I have the privilege of being the John Muir Conservationist of the Year in America this year, said tug on anything and you'll find it connected to everything else. There's birds in those trees. This is habitat. The International Migratory Bird Treaty, which was signed in 1918, protects birds. I want to just quickly mention, I sat in the plaza, stood in the plaza about eight years ago before I thought the tree policy was revised to reflect this, to hear an arborist hired by the city say, "Tom, there are no birds nesting in May on the plaza." Bird nesting seasons, February to July. Sonoma County was just selected by a citizen science panel, is the most, there's more birds nesting and living and spending wintering here than any of the nine surrounding counties, which is pretty impressive. We have hundreds and hundreds of people involved in birding. The fact that you, I worked with Caltrans when they brought down the trees on Broadway, and the ornithologist, and I don't know if you have an ornithologist in this city, should definitely have one, whenever you do any tree cutting that's not in the winter. You know, it's, once you get into bird season and bird nesting season, you're getting into a dicey situation. And that brings in fishing game and so on and so forth. But the reality is that there's a 25-year study going on right now in Sonoma and surrounds for the Breeding Bird Atlas. There is also a professional ornithologist of many stripes available. We have the most preeminent birding organization in Western North America, a PRBO, 15 minutes away. This type of experience should be looked at in the big picture, and that's why I said tug on anything and you'll find it connected to everything else. It's not just cutting down a tree, particularly on the eve of Arbor Day. It's really talking about the big picture and the people, investment in the time in all of this. We had postponed a baseball season. We had postponed a baseball season when the trees, when the hawks were nesting on the lights. They moved their night games to day games. So we really ought to be checking about the nesting in the whole picture. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Jack Powers, 527 Broadway. I have two trees in front of my property. God, I'm overwhelmed for once at the city council meeting. I was here to berate Mr. Barnett. I love the guy. He just told you exactly what you got to do. It's very easy for the staff to say, "Get rid of the trees, make it right," and let the owners pay for it. They have no, they have no say in any of the expense or anything. They're just the staff saying, "Don't give us the burden of expenses. Just give us the right tree." I was here in 1991 when the issue came up. They postponed it because of lack of funds. When it came back, when they got the funding from private people, I was here as the only one protesting that these trees that they're putting in are going to crack the sidewalk and you're going to blame us and we're going to pay for it. Didn't happen. You did it anyway because you took the free lunch. When it came to retrofit the buildings, I came to the city and I said, "Would you please remove a branch from that tree toward my property so I can get my forklifts in to retrofit the front of my building?" The city said, "We don't have any money to do that." I went down and cut the branch off. Well, unbeknownst to me, a city employee showed up, asked the workers who cut the branch. They said the owner of the property. He went back to City Hall, got a camera, came back down to the property, took a picture, took the picture back to the police department, issued a warrant for my arrest. I got the issue. I went to the judge and told him the story. He looked at me after they stopped laughing about the issue and said, "Just get out of here." It was ridiculous. We can't maintain the trees. We can't touch the trees, but we own these trees because they're put in by your city for our beautification, but they pass it back to Caltrans because they have a law that says they're in charge of Highway 12. So the city's off the hook. So now what happens is, we've got a tree in there that already cost me once to replace the sidewalk because the city came by and said, "Replace that sidewalk because it's buckled." Said, "It's your trees." Said, "Doesn't matter." So I already did my sidewalk once. This time it's worse. I'm willing to remove the trees, but I don't want to take this whole thing on my own. I didn't want the tree to go in there and break my sidewalk up. You wanted the tree to go in there and break it up. I just want to see a little bit of something coming together that says, "Hey, we were responsible for this thing. One, we didn't put the right tree in. Two, we didn't put in the root capturing system so that this wouldn't happen. And now, just don't pass it back off on me, the property owner, because I'm not made of all that kind of money." So all I'm saying is, thank you, Mr. Barnett, for saying you have a responsibility also. And I'd like to do a little half and half for reimbursement for all of the city work I'm going to have to do. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Catherine 70, Century 21 Wine Country. Live at 446 East Walnut Street. I'm the owner of the, we're the tenant, I own the company that rents from Jack Powers, and I'm here speaking on his behalf, and I also manage the building for him. So Jack's not, nor am I, attached to if those trees come or go. We're just attached to who has to pay for the sidewalk. And they may not be causing damage in other areas around town, but it's pretty clear to me that that's what's causing the damage in front of our building because right where the trees are, it's where it's lifted. The city has come out and patched ours, which we appreciate. We see a face plant right in front of our building at least three or four times a year where someone hits it and goes straight down. Once it was a city employee, he did not sue. He, I think he broke his nose and ambulance took him to the hospital. People trip there all the time. So our first concern is safety. Our second concern is, we don't want to have to pay for something that was done, probably not with a lot of thoughtfulness. Thirdly, I don't care if the trees come or go. It just doesn't seem fair that the landowner, that the business owner, has to pay for the city repairs for the sidewalk, even though that's what the laws and the rules say, when it's a city tree and we can't do anything about that. It makes no sense for the property owner to have to fix the sidewalk when the tree's just going to do it again in five years. You don't need to worry about a barrier being put there because the barrier is going to be our buildings in another 10 years with those trees. Soon, they're going to be lifting up and not just the sidewalk, and you don't have to worry about watering them because their roots are starting to go into the sewer system. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Fred Alabac, 195508 Street East, and I'm currently a member of the Community Services Environmental Commission. Before I became a commissioner, I probably went to about eight Tree Committee meetings because I was interested in urban forestry, and I have a hobby of identifying trees when I'm on the Pacific Crest Trail, and I really enjoy trees. And Sonoma has some particularly nice trees, large trees. One thing I noticed in the Tree Committee meeting is the same pattern came up over and over. An applicant came in with pictures of a buckled sidewalk, said, "We're going to get sued. We want to cut this tree down." It's the same thing over and over again, and who's responsible? And so I looked on the Internet and I found some municipal codes of some national sidewalk codes and things, and so typically it seems like the city tries to put their responsibility on the property owner. But as Tom said, you know, when you tug on one thing, it's connected to everything else so that the trees in the city are basically a commons, but everyone's arguing about who's responsible for it. So I don't think it's reasonable from a practical standpoint for the city to say it's all the homeowner's responsibility. I think this is a type of responsibility that needs to be looked into, that this kind of, it's the same thing happens over and over at the Tree Committee meetings, and it just didn't seem right to me that this was the way it was, and that all these nice big trees get cut down, and you get these weasely little trees from Australia that get about 15 feet tall, and they all look the same. And people in the Sonoma Ecology Center and others are thinking about an urban forestry program that increases the biodiversity of a city and makes the city a more enriched place. And that depends on having a large canopy that's going to have the species, and if you look down Broadway, that's a really nice canopy there. To take those trees out would just be a stunning degradation of the atmosphere and the habitat there. So I think that, you know, whatever's happening there with the sidewalk, I looked at it pretty closely today, and it didn't look that bad to me. Anybody could trip because their shoe is too big. You know, who's going to sue who? It's like, you know, it's all about lawyers and it's not about our commons. And so it's a litigious society, and I think that somehow this whole pattern needs to be addressed by the city so that it's a little bit better than how it goes. So I would suggest that in this case, that these trees are really nice and they represent a biodiversity, they represent canopy, they represent the ability of Sonoma to become a tree city and not a weasely 15-foot tree city from Australia, that they all, I forget the name of them, but they all look the same and they're everywhere, and they're on the list and they keep being planted in place of these nice big trees. So I would say, you know, just work to keep those trees, root the roots out of the sewers there, and don't take them out. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
God help me, you're going to give me more than three minutes. Just what this gentleman said, "Your shoes are too big?" I used to walk, eight years ago, three and a half miles around Sonoma, crack of dawn, 45 minutes. I did great, and then I tripped on Spain Street, and Larry Barnett knows about this. I broke my hip. I ended up in Sonoma Hospital. I've got a metal plate and four screws. It's not that their shoes are too big. And then I walked, got myself going, I walked a mile. And I just want to let you people know, this is not a darn tattoo. This is a compression sleeve. I'm a breast cancer survivor. For nine years, I got lymphedema. I'm doing the best I can. This really infuriates me. I've been here, when I moved to Sonoma at 10 years old. I'm going to be 79 in May. And when stuff happened in our street, God help me, he was the mayor, Joe Costello. I called him. He had the city come and take care of what happened when they put the signs down there. Now all of a sudden, we get, anything that happens now, it's on our, we're going to pay for it? This is, excuse me, as Gary Edred said, he doesn't like what I say, but this is a bunch of da-da-da-da. And something's got to be done. Sonoma is getting too hardy-toity. And I've lived here, on that house for 55 years, going to be 56, and I am sick of what is going on in this city. And I know, Dave, a lot of people don't like what you're doing, but God bless you. I am so glad you are mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Arbor Day, City Council. Kelso Barnett. This is actually why I came two weeks ago to talk about, I remember being about 11 or 12 years old and living just a block off Broadway when this tree planting program was put into place in 1993, and I was excited because, as we all know, that stretch of Broadway coming into City Hall, that's sort of like the red carpet into town, and I think the beautification of that block, or two blocks really, is really important. And so I think any decision to remove such important trees, that aren't just trees, you know, a nice canopy now, but were really the fruit of a fundraising effort, the first Red and White Ball led by Suzanne Brangam was held, and the money raised was, the $300,000 from that event was raised for these trees. I think any decision you make needs to be taken seriously and with a lot of information. As I was saying, when I was younger, I was excited these trees were coming in, but I was unhappy because we were going to have to wait so long for the trees to grow and get large and become beautiful. And finally, they're getting to that point, and it's unfortunate that we're at this point where we have to talk about removing them. I understand why it's been brought up. I think the property owners have brought up some very legitimate concerns. But to echo what Mr. Barnett originally said, I just don't think there is enough information before you tonight to make a decision on whether or not you're going to cut down such a beautiful urban tree canopy on the red carpet into town. I just think this decision is premature. I had a few questions. Again, they're very similar to what Mr. Barnett said earlier, one of which, some of the arborists on the Tree Committee and the Community Services and Environment Commission, they all said one thing or another. I think an independent report would be important beyond just our local commission committees. I think we need to know more about the trees. We need to know more about what they can do. We need to know if these trees are going to get too large. Is it, does it make sense to take out all of them, or should we just do every other one? So in the report, spacing was an issue. Why take all of them out? Why don't you just take every other one out? If it costs $300,000 in 1993 to install all these trees, I can only assume it's going to cost $600,000, $700,000 now. Is that going to be, going forward, what is the expense going to be associated with repairing these sidewalks? Is it going to be that much? Is it going to be more? Is it going to be less? Would it save the city money to just repair these sidewalks for the property owners? I totally understand where the property owners are coming from, and I think they've been put in an unfortunate situation, but I don't think you have enough information for you tonight to make the right decision. I think you need to sort of gather information, know how much this is going to cost, know what the replacement plan is. Have these trees even been considered as part of the new circulation, new Broadway plan, incorporating them, or have we already sort of jumped the gun on that? So I would just encourage you to get more information before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No.
No. Only one, sorry. Seeing done, I'm going to go ahead and close this and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Hunley?
I have a few questions for the staff. What is the level of inspection and confirmation that the city has done about all of the information that's in the letters, like, you know, the lawsuits and the drain, roots in the drains and that sort of thing? Has there been our own confirmation of what they're saying is happening?
Again, the city has taken on a sidewalk inspection and trip hazard repair program, so the city has put money into the trip hazards. As far as the sewer lines go, they are not the city's responsibility. However, I have talked to the sanitation district, and they say there are roots in the sewer lines, but they haven't seen anything too significant yet. However, the three arborists who are certified on the city's Tree Committee, they have unanimously agreed that the trees are going to continue growing, and it's going to be a greater and greater problem for a lot of the infrastructure that's along that sidewalk. Not just sidewalks, but other infrastructure, other pipes, other telecommunications lines, foundations, et cetera.
So has anyone looked to see if it's actually every single tree on the street, or has anyone, I mean, because some must be causing more damage than others, so has anyone tried to assess, like, on a per-tree basis, like, which ones are the biggest offenders?
At the February Tree Committee meeting, well, actually at the January Tree Committee meeting, the Tree Committee asked staff to come back with some better information about all the 31 trees that are along, 36 trees that are along Upper Broadway. We did bring photographs. Certainly not every tree is causing major damage, but to go in and investigate sub- Certainly not every tree is causing major damage, but to go in and investigate subsurface would be totally beyond city staff's capability and funding capability. We can only look at the surface and see that there is considerable root damage, especially from the larger trees. Some trees are up to twenty-four inches in diameter, others are only about eight inches in diameter.
Is there any possibility of relocating the trees?
No. And, I mean, obviously we should ask a certified arborist, but having talked to many of them, once a tree gets to roughly about eight or twelve inches, I mean, you'd have to have such a massive amount of machinery and it would be extremely difficult to transplant and have a fairly high probability of survival.
So if they did cut down the trees, what would happen to them? Would they just chop them up and burn them in someone's fireplace or would they sell them or?
There might be a small amount of value that we would typically ask the landscaping company to incorporate in. But again, I'd like to emphasize that the city didn't just decide to place this responsibility on abutting property owners. The state did so. It's in their state code, streets and highway code. We're just trying to follow the state code, which says the abutting property owner is responsible. So if the council chooses to contribute to that cause, it certainly could. But technically, the responsibility for removing and whatever the property owner wants to do with those trees, I suppose they could do.
Well, I understand the liability question and I think it makes a lot more sense with bigger cities when it's harder for the city to keep an eye on all the sidewalks. But I'm just trying to see, the information that we're making this decision on, it seems to be just based on what people are telling us, but it's not really based on any sort of internal confirmation about, informations about three trip and fall lawsuits and lots of clogged sewer drains and even looking into things like the bird question or whether we could just take out some and space them out more and maybe that would be less liability for the building owners. But it does seem like there's more information to be found.
Yeah. I'd like to just address the bird issue quickly. Whenever we do a project, for instance, we're looking at replacing Chase Street Bridge and taking out some trees there. We're up at our Wella project. We do take the bird nesting season into account and we try and do any treatment removals outside of that period of time. But as far as infrastructure damage, again, I think it would just be cost prohibitive to do a detailed analysis on what each tree is doing. But we have seen tremendous sidewalk damage and to the extent that the city can within its $50,000 a year program, the city has contributed money to making those repairs. And if we can't make the repair by saw cutting, the city does offer a $1,000 cost share to the removal and replacement of sidewalks. So the city is putting some skin in the game.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
Dan, we talked a little bit at length today on this particular issue. I've talked some with Mr. Barnett. I had a phone call from Melissa and I was not able to answer that today, so I apologize. But, you know, frankly, you know, part of me is looking at, if we were to do this, if we were to remove trees and if we were to come back on a circulation element replacement, we wouldn't actually have any dollars or estimates that we could make at this point without having that circulation element before us or replanting guide or any of that. Is there any way to ballpark that at this point?
It would be very rough. I mean, just like when we're doing another capital project for the city, you can't really get a very good estimate until you have at least about 65% design plans completed. Otherwise, it is kind of a rough ballpark. As far as the cost of trip hazards, we do know that and I would certainly be willing to share that information. For repairing small trip hazards that can be saw cut, we pay $30 an inch foot, meaning that if a trip hazard is one inch high over one foot, we pay $30 to have that saw cut. For sidewalk removals and replacements, it varies, but typically taking out about a twelve-foot section would probably cost about $2,000 to $3,000. That could increase if certain tree roots or trees might need to be removed in the process.
And then, let's just say you went ahead and you removed that. We worked out an agreement and cooperation, you know, with consent of my other council members. But if we went ahead and did that, this would guarantee us how much time?
Not much, especially with growing trees that are expected to probably get to at least probably thirty-six inch diameter or better. Again, these are planted in quite a small planter strip, about a four-foot planter strip. There's not a whole lot of room without causing quite more extensive damage, not only to the sidewalk, also to the curb and gutter, also to the street, and again, all the other infrastructure that's been discussed.
All right. And if you could just, in the mirror of Caltrans, we can't be the only city that has had this issue come before Caltrans. What is their standing? Do they stand firmly behind the highway code with little or no variance in exception? Or do they provide you help? Do they give you money? Is there any opportunities?
No help. We have a maintenance agreement with Caltrans that places the responsibility for enforcing Streets and Highway Code 5610 upon the city staff and that's what we do.
All right. And this occasional, perhaps, haircuts that we do give the trees, how is that appropriated? Or do we have any cycle in which we know it's going to happen?
It's pretty much done on a funds available basis, which hasn't been very often. We typically take that out of the city's gas tax fund and I'd say the last time we've probably performed it was about two years ago.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agralante?
Thank you. I'm so, this frustrates me and I'm sure it frustrates you and because we're all victims here. This is, somebody used to say BMT before my time. It's before everybody in this room possibly, the staff, council. And it's almost shameful that all the good work that went into this, and I was thinking, Mr. Powers, maybe you should have had a statue in your honor saying, "I told you so." It's so, it is very frustrating and I understand both sides and it is very difficult and I think it was discussed today and with someone and it's a rock between a rock and a hard place. There's no, you know, some, there's nobody to blame on the lack of the root barriers. They're not around anymore. The good people that raised the money, Suzanne Brangham, of course, is a wonderful person. And it's a shame that no one took a deep breath and said, "Well, you know, why these trees?" And it's really unfortunate because now we are in the present day and here we are with this huge issue affecting, as this gentleman came up and said, birds, all of these things are affected. The business owners, you know, I don't know. I just, I hope somebody else will be able to. I thought, Lori, you had great questions because funding, you know, obviously there's no funding possibly sometime, you know, maybe after I'm gone, there's going to be grant money to deal with this. I don't know. But, you know, I just feel it's very difficult. This is a difficult, difficult question and, you know, I'm trying not to say shame on those who came before us, shame on you. And I know they were well-meaning people, but, you know, I'm dealing with the something now, the swimming pool committee, and we want, we are working hard to make sure it's sustainable. And it's a shame that possibly that wasn't considered.
Councilmember Hunley?
Thought that I was having, I mean, it sounds like if these trees typically grow to six feet in diameter, then it's just, it's not a problem that's going to go away. But if nothing is going to happen for two years anyway, because we have to wait till all of these other plans are made, and then at that point, we'll probably have a lot more better idea about costs and maybe we'll know more about the trees. So I'm wondering why this decision has to be made today.
Public Works Director?
There isn't a critical day-to-day, probably month-to-month urgency, but the removal applications have come in and I think we do owe the applicants some type of a response. I'll leave that to City Council.
So I guess, I guess what I, I just wanted to go over the timing again. Pending the Caltrans permission, I mean, would they get, will Caltrans give that permission? I mean, what are the odds?
Well, I think the Caltrans permission is more on the replanting and how they see that. Again, within the circulation element, we're going to be looking at a number of issues, be in bicycles, pedestrians, vehicular circulation and parking. And Caltrans will want to take a very close look at that. The street trees, I'd say, would be a minor, probably subset of that plan.
So if we can just talk about timing again. If the city council tonight, if we decided to grant the cutting of these trees, what would be the timing?
I would say that if we took the route of developing a replanting plan either in parallel or subsequent to the circulation element, maybe a planning director can answer it better, but I think we're probably still about six months away from even starting such a replanting plan. And maybe another six months hence or maybe a year hence to get Caltrans approval on that.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
All right. So the question is, you know, for me, that I see that there might be a necessity for removal of maybe some trees, not necessarily all trees. And I find it difficult to go ahead and make a decision without knowing what's going to come forward. I talked at length with this, with city manager today. I said, you know, that these are mistakes of the past, these are good intentions, but not having the proper planting plan or even the proper tree. And maybe with the technology that was at that particular point, that was what was available. So to me, I say my highest, highest concern is safety here. And I worry that, you know, that there is support enough, you know, especially in the drought years that we have coming forward in the fourth year, are we going to be able to support these trees and the amount of them that's on Broadway? I just want to make sure that if we are not going to be making a decision for all of them or some of them, I want to know how that would be assessed on a safety basis as well as not just the sidewalk, who's paying for what portion, what the replacement tree is going to look like and are we going to have to, you know, work out what a replacement tree is going to do in the middle of the, you know, the fact that we're keeping other trees that are still the same. And I find myself in a very complex situation here and, Mr. Noble, you have my hero award for going out there and cutting that branch off. Not that I'm saying that I want every citizen to do that, but I just want to say that, number one, you know, I want to be able to answer that question to you. If I need to cut down a branch to get that done, I want to hear that answered by staff here. I don't want to have people going out there, cutting their own limbs of trees. And I never want to be putting anybody in that type of risk mode at all, especially prestigious business owners of our community. So, I'm sorry, I just riffed on there. So, so, Dan, go ahead, I'm finished.
I wasn't sure if you wanted a response to that. I think on the issue of trimming trees, the city code says you shall not trim or touch trees in the street area without city permission. And that permission would come reasonably from the Public Works Department on trimming on an encroachment permit or from the Tree Committee on a removal. The Public Works Department is more than happy to provide permission for maintenance and if it has to be done in a manner that's a little bit dangerous, we would hope that the property owner would secure a landscaper with a good lift to perform that work.
Is there any further discussion and action?
And I just wanted to say, in this time period, eighty-nine, ninety-one, I was a mother to a young tot. And frankly, I don't think my thinking was in this particular area, so I was hoping maybe I could think back and give some historical significance at this time, but I cannot. I only know that they appeared and that they were planted.
Is there any other council discussion and action on this item? I'm looking for a motion.
I would say I'd like to make a motion regarding the action on the removal and replanting of Broadway street trees. I think it's starting with the two addresses for those, the applications that are there. Sort of lost. Is it 561 Broadway? And 520? No, sorry, 561. I think there are two trees here. So I'd like to make a motion on that.
Well, excuse me, that was just one of the three applications. And that one was actually approved by the Tree Committee at 561. Then there were seventeen trees between 520 Broadway and 578 Broadway that were sought removal. And then there was the other one by John Powers at 525 to 527 Broadway, looking at removing another couple of trees.
525 to 527?
Now, those were only the applications that were received thus far.
So, are there, 561, oh, one, when it was received in fourteen, I think, is that right? On 10/31/14?
Right.
And the others, one was received 12/11/14 for 520 to 578?
Councilmember, if I could interrupt for a second?
Sure.
I think what staff is probably recommending is not to address these specific applications, but looking at a general removal of street trees subject to a tree replanting plan that comes back to council for approval and also Caltrans approval. And that would be from the area from Napa Street down to Patton Street.
Patton. Well, then I'll make a friendly amendment to my motion. Then I would say to proceed with this, the removal of trees, however, it'll come, I think, as you said, it'll come back to the council and also a replanting plan as well. So we're not moving forward physically, but we will have a better idea.
Moving forward physically until council approves a replanting plan.
Okay.
Councilmember Hunley?
Yeah, I have a question about that. I think what I'm looking for is before we just blanket agree to cut down all the trees, I think that there's a lot of information that's missing. We're just assuming that it's all the trees and we're only saying that because they say it's all the trees. So before we actually, you know... So before we actually, you know, say that we're going to cut them all down, what would our options be if we wanted to find out more about, like, which trees are the bigger offenders, or is that even possible?
Certainly, if you would desire, staff could do a more thorough investigation. It might take hiring some arborists to go out there and do some investigation, maybe some subsurface investigation, and we could come back with a more thorough inventory.
And I like that idea, thank you. I agree with that. I agree with that. Thanks for, for offering that.
I think what that actually, you know, if I could speak to it, I, I think that actually gives us a little bit better idea of how many trees would actually be impacting, and how many portions of sidewalk would, would we be relieving as a result of a tree leaving. So I'd like to see that ratio, too, because I think then it brings in the business element of, or the property owner element of what our scope of plan is. My, my thing is, is that, you know, in transportation, I see this all the time. I see with Caltrans, you know, being involved in the plans and what you're trying to do. And to me, Caltrans will say, no, we don't approve this, or we don't approve that, or whatever. My fear is that we would go ahead and we'd be subplanting something in the future, that we don't have any idea as to what the scope is going to be here and now. And I think, for me, if I was talking about ten trees, if I was talking about all trees, that's a very different decision for me.
So, did you want to amend your, your motion to match?
I, I think it would, the issue would be to include these all, however you're going to review, review every one of them. Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, with what Rachel offered, to actually take a look at the trees, and you were saying you would bring in arborist possibly to study something like that, is that what I'm hearing? And that would include what you're thinking, Lori?
I think what I'm hearing from council is that you would like staff to go and take a more thorough investigation of all the trees before any removal and replanting action is taking place.
And I guess if I could ask City Staff a question, what, do we have an estimated cost of what that would be? And who would pay?
Best person to take a ballpark guess at that, and I would say we're probably looking at maybe about ten thousand.
And that's, and who pays that?
The city would have to pay for that.
So I guess I'm looking for council discussion and action based on that.
I've done, I think I've completed my motion, and it's understood, I believe.
No, I think, I think right now, Councilmember Agaramonte, Councilmember Agaramonte, that your, your motion right now is to proceed with the removal of these trees, subject to the City Council at a later date approving a replanting plan. Councilmember Hunley suggested a different motion, that was, no, do not take that action tonight, but rather hire an arborist or some other expertise to analyze each of these trees, to see if any are worthy of saving, before the council takes action to, to approve their removal, even though that removal may be subject to a later replanting plan.
And I agree with what Councilmember Hunley has said. So I would say not the action of removing trees without that study. I believe that's what we've said, is that right?
Postpone an action until we study.
Yeah, postpone an action until we, we study the relevance of these trees, which trees.
Postpone approval.
Yes. Does that, is that your understanding as well?
Well, I, I would just say we've given staff direction as to what we would like coming back. Is, is that clear enough?
I think we should have a motion and a vote. I think what I'm really hearing is that Councilmember Agaramonte has withdrawn her motion, and Councilmember Hunley may have a substitute motion.
Did you want to put that in the form of a motion, Councilmember Hunley?
I consider this to be a friendly motion.
I would, yes, I have a motion to postpone the decision upon the removal, and to conduct a study on the individual trees, to see if any of them are savable.
With a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion until, or do we go to a roll call vote? Is it, you guys all ready to vote?
I'm finished.
Okay. City Clerk, if you want to go ahead and.
Councilmember Agaramonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Gallion.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley.
Aye.
Mayor Cook.
Aye. With that, for, for public to understand, we actually made a motion. We actually made a motion of looking at hiring an arborist and do a little bit more work with City Staff, and have it come back to the council. With that, we're going to go ahead. Councilmember Edwards, are you, are you set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll go to seven B, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the approval of a resolution to authorize a city manager to execute an energy services agreement with Tanco Lighting Incorporated for LED streetlight conversion services in the amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. B, authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary for on-bill financing with Pacific Gas Electric, known as PG&E, in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Or C, and C, authorize the city manager to sign an unsecured promissory note for an inter-fund loan from the General Fund, Fund One Hundred, to the Gas Tax Fund, Fund Three-O-Two, and approving the filing of a SEQA notice of exemption pursuant to Section one-five-three-zero-one B and C of the SEQA guidelines. Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This issue before you is to fulfill a council goal to replace city streetlights with more energy-efficient LED streetlight fixtures. The city has about eleven-hundred streetlights that are under high-pressure sodium variety, and those are the kind of yellowish-orange lights that you typically see. They are becoming somewhat inefficient, and technology has come a long ways recently to where LED lighting fixtures have come down significantly in cost. In fact, we've really been surprised at how far down they've come in cost lately. But by converting our LED fixtures, we can see a reduction of greenhouse gases to the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand pounds of CO2 annually, better public safety by pedestrians being able to be seen and to see, and also for police to be able to see much better. And in order to make this happen efficiently, one of the things we would like to do is to enter into a turnkey agreement with, with Tanco Lighting, so that they can perform all these services without too much staff time expenditure. One of the ways that we can also make this more efficient is to, instead of doing our own RFP process, which would take quite a bit of staff time, we could piggyback on the RFP process that the City of San Bruno recently performed, and they approved in February, to select Tanco Lighting to perform these services. So if council agrees, we can piggyback on that contract, and we will have selected a, a contractor to perform these services. One change that will be quite evident is that the color of the lighting will have changed, and it will be what we call a color temperature of four-thousand K, which is about the color of moonlight. It's not that bright blue light that we're, probably most of us wouldn't prefer, that's fifty-six-hundred K. But four-thousand K is about what we see in some of the inner plaza decorative lights now, which are metal halide, and those would also be converted to LED. We also have some LED streetlight fixtures at Caltrans intersections. Those have already been converted, and you may have noticed LED fixtures there. As in performing this work, we should be able to see energy savings of about seventy-four-thousand dollars annually. And we expect maintenance savings from not having to replace the lamps as often, and not having to rent out equipment of about thirty thousand annually. So roughly, we anticipate about a hundred thousand dollars in savings annually. Also, in this, in this request, it would be to approve on-bill financing through PG&E. They have a program to provide a zero percent loan up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We expect this project to cost roughly about three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. We've included some contingency, so we're saying not to exceed three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand would create a shortfall, and that shortfall would be addressed through an inter-fund loan from the General Fund to the Gas Tax Fund, to make up the difference. So with that, I'd be open to any questions, and, well, actually, if I could, I would like to have our representative from Tanco Lighting, Mr. Hugh Carroll, make a quick presentation on the lighting color that we would expect.
If you want, please come up to the podium. I assume that's you, because you're the only one in the room, except for the two reporters and City Staff.
Thanks, I prepared a brief presentation to illustrate the light, the color of lights, and how they compare with high-pressure sodium, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has as well. So, this is just a, a quick overview of our local experience. We've been gaining a lot of market share lately. Over the course of the last three years, these are the projects that we've completed. They're, they're really just some of the projects that we've completed over the last few years. And I just want to say that these projects were, were full turnkey as well, so it's the cost of the fixture and all of the services associated with installation, getting the rebates, et cetera. We developed a proposal using Cree fixtures, definitely one of the top brands in the industry. These are the specific fixtures that we've chosen, the XSP Cobra Head, and two varieties of post-top. They ship with a standard ten-year warranty, and they will be at four-thousand K, which this next slide, this next slide, the top is in the City of Berkeley, one of the projects that we've recently completed, Dwight Way, you can see the, the difference. And the bottom row is an arterial that, that's just generic stock photograph, illustrating the difference in color temperature. Berkeley chose a four-thousand K. These are the post-tops. The difference, the, the top row shows the difference between a standard high-pressure sodium acorn and, and an LED retrofit of that same fixture. The one on the, the upper right-hand corner happens to be Pasadena, and the one in the bottom is the City of Napa, that was a, it was a custom retrofit that we put together for that city on the bridges, and the wine train platform as well. And the color temperature in Napa is four-thousand as well.
Is there any questions? Council questions? Councilmember Hunley.
So what, are we doing a retrofit to our current lights? Are they changing to the Cobra light that was on there?
We are changing the fixture elements, not the posts, but the fixture elements to LED fixtures. So all of the, all eleven-hundred of the city's street lamps and decorative fixtures, even those decorative ones down Broadway and around the plaza, will be changed to LED lights.
So it's just the, the light part of it that's being fixed, not the way that the outside looks, and just the color of the light's going to change?
Correct. Although the, on the Cobra Head lights, the entire fixture will be changed out, so it'll, I think.
I guess the question is the lens, I mean, the lens gets changed?
The Cobra Heads will be replaced entirely with a brand-new fixture, whereas the, the decoratives and the post-tops in the park, surrounding the park, and on Broadway, will be retrofit. The only thing that will change is the light engine.
Where do we have Cobras right now?
Most, most of our streetlights are the Cobra Heads.
Is there any other council questions before I go out to public?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the council for council discussion and action. I did want to ask one question. It's a little relevant to this, but, because a constituent had called me up the other day to ask me, how often do we go out to check to see if our streetlights are out? Or does City Staff have a program of a certain timing, or is it mostly complaint-driven?
I have to confess, it is mostly complaint-driven, but when we do get a complaint, on occasion, when we can get staff to go out in the darkness, we do have them take a look at other lights that could be a problem, so they make a, a little bit of a circuit, and we typically find others that need to be replaced. And when we get that complaint, often we don't address it immediately, partly because it costs so much to get a lift, so we try and aggregate at least five to ten lamps before we rent the lifting, go out and make those replacements.
Thank you. So I guess I'm looking for a council discussion and action.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
I just, my comment is, is that I think that this is going in the right direction. I have been over to Napa, I have seen that, some council members went last week for dinner, and the atmosphere in the evening is beautiful, and it's not a harsh light, it doesn't look like something out of a retro fifties movie. It, it actually is something that's beautiful, and when you're up on the hills and you're looking down, it's a, it's a different type of lighting that you see there, rather than something that most people are there. But I'm very, since I have been on the council since two thousand and eight, this has been talked about, you know, as far as switching out lighting is concerned. This is yet another directive in our goals of where we're going ahead and increasing both safety and economy of scale. And congratulations in your many contracted cities, and thank you for considering us as well.
Councilmember Edwards.
To the staff, I, I think it's a great idea, the payback, I like for your payback, and maybe that extra hundred thousand could go towards sidewalks down Broadway later. So I'm going to support the, as.
Councilmember Agaramonte.
Yes. Could I, I'd like to ask the City Manager, would you go through C of this agenda item title to just explain it?
Basically, we're loaning ourselves the money, that we're pre-financing, so the, what we have to do is, because of the payback, we have to kind of pre-fund some of this money, and so in order not to go out to outside financing, we're basically, the General Fund is loaning the Gas Tax Fund, and so, and, and so not to go out to outside financing and paying interest rates to an outside financing company, we're internally financing. And so the interest rate will just basically be the interest earnings that the General Fund would normally make on that money, is be, will charge the Gas Tax Fund for that equal amount of interest rate. So we're internally financing and paying ourselves back.
Thank you so much. I think it's going to be advantageous for us to have that in the minutes, so if people look at that. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Gallion.
I just wanted to say, I, I think I understand this about the GIS component that's being served also. This would be an update of our inventory, is that correct, or a way to track what we actually have in the city?
Right. As part of the services from Tanco Lighting, they will do an audit of all the street lamps in the city. And other cities have found, oh my goodness, some of these streetlights that we've been paying for forever aren't even in our, our city, or else they might find that other streetlights that we should have been paying for are in our city. So we'll do a full inventory, get a full GIS layer of where these streetlights are located, what type, and Tanco Electric will. what type, and Tanco Electric will also come in after installation, and also adjust the lighting as necessary to make sure that the lighting is optimized for every location in the city.
Okay, I guess we're looking for discussion in action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution of the city council, the city of Sonoma authorizing the city manager to execute an energy services agreement with Tanco Lighting for light-emitting diode streetlight conversion services, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for on-bill financing with Pacific Gas and Electric, authorizing the city manager to execute an unsecured promissory note to authorize an interfund loan between the general fund and the gas fund, and do I have to specify the numbers? Okay, thank you, and approving the filing of a SEQA notice of exemption pursuant to Section 15301 BC of the SEQA guidelines.
I will second, I'm sorry.
So be a second by Edwards. If there's not any other council discussion, I will go ahead and call on the city clerk to do a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. For public, we went ahead and we authorized the energy service contract to Tanco. We will move to 7C, which is approval of a resolution modifying the Stage 2 water shortage responding to new state drought emergency water conservation regulations. Public Works Director?
Again, thank you, Mayor, and council members. This issue before you is just a slight modification of our current Stage 2 water conservation alert that went into effect on August 18th of 2014. But some new regulations have come out from the State Water Resources Control Board, and they were approved on March 27th, 2015. And from that date, we had 45 days to implement the new regulations. But to make things a little more confusing, the state is working on another set of regulations that came out in draft on Saturday, and those were expecting to be approved by the state probably in mid-May. But for now, we'd like to address the regulations that went into effect on March 27th, and we'd also like to incorporate some of the regulations that we expect to be coming out in mid-May. So of those new mandatory requirements, they would prohibit the application of potable water to outdoor landscapes during and within a 48 hours after measurable rainfall. Again, these are state requirements. They prohibit the serving of drinking water other than upon request in eating and drinking establishments, and they would require that operators of hotels and motels provide guests with the option of choosing not to have towels and linens laundered daily. And they would also set limits on the number of days when outdoor turf irrigation is allowed. Now, as you know, we've already done that. In fact, the city has set two days a week, which is the most stringent of any water utilities in Sonoma County, and we've been on that since August 18th. So these would be incorporated into our Stage 2 water conservation alert. We have already, we've already been, most hotels and motels have already had, given their guests, the option of choosing not to have towels and linens laundered daily. So all that we're going to be doing is, on our own voluntary basis, we'd be extending that to vacation rentals and BMBs. Also taking on, and we've, have already started the water on request cards out to restaurants and eating establishments. Also with the new regulations that are in progress, this resolution would also provide some additional restrictions that haven't quite been yet incorporated by the state, but we think that it's prudent to incorporate them now. And one is a prohibition against irrigating public street mediums, medians with potable water on ornamental turf. Fortunately, the city has no such street medians, so we don't need to worry about that one, at least not public street medians. Also putting a prohibition on irrigating with potable water outside of newly constructed homes and buildings, except by drip or micro spray systems, and this would be enforced under the building permit. And development of rate structures to maximize conservation consistent with stray water restrictions. I think the city's water rate tiers are probably the steepest of any water utility in Sonoma County, having just adjusted those back in January. And another requirement is reporting monthly to the state on water usage and enforcement. We've been doing that since September of 13, although the requirements for reporting are getting a little bit more stringent than before. So with that, council staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Public Works Director. I'll bring this back to council for any questions. Vice Mayor Gallion?
So when I look at this and where we've just come, the difference is that we are in mandatory, meaning that it must be complied with. And when does it end, Dan?
That's a very good question. I don't think anybody can answer that, because, I mean, it depends on next winter's rainfall.
Councilmember Edwards?
So Dan, when the Tuesday market's about to begin, and part of the recovery for the plaza is watering, so are we, is staff going to monitor and have an extra eye on the activity on the plaza with the thousands of people that come every Tuesday? And what are we going to do to help ourselves so we don't lose, lose the quality of the, the turf, but also balance the need for the public to use it?
One of the decisions that the council made back in August 18th of 2014 was to exempt the plaza from the twice-a-week watering, because it is such a utilized park. And every water utility has certain specific exemptions, so this isn't unusual, and I don't think it's out of bounds from the state regulations.
Thank you.
Is there any other council questions?
I have a question for Mr. Takasugi. Wait a minute, hold it. Takasugi, I got it, thank you. Let me see, I think it's the last one of this set. Sets limit on the number of days when outdoor turf irrigation is allowed. I know for our system, we have an irrigation system, and we do eight minutes twice a week, and it might be per station, I'm not sure, I have to ask my retired gardener husband, and, but is there any way to restrict people, obviously, because I think when it's 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, do you think some people say, hey, I can just water all that 12 hours? What, what is there, what's the parameters on that?
Well, one other restriction that's in place already is, there should be no runoff onto non-irrigated areas.
Okay.
So, I mean, first of all, if somebody were to try and irrigate that much, they would put themselves almost immediately into Tier 4...
Right.
...which costs three times as much as Tier 1.
Exactly.
So there's certainly a financial disincentive. But at some point, we, public works staff gets in early in the morning, and if we see runoff, we're likely to first put a door hanger, and then we'll keep monitoring that situation.
Councilmember Huntley?
Thank you.
Kind of related to that, as far as enforcement of the number of days, is it mostly when people call in on their neighbor, or do you guys drive around? Or is there a way to, like, look at water bills to see if, like, unusual activity is on the wrong day?
Well, as far as monitoring on water bills, we only read once a month, so it would be pretty hard to tell. We do get neighbors, calling on neighbors, unfortunately, but that is one avenue that we do get complaints, and we do investigate. I've informed all our public work staff that they are to be monitoring, so in their daily work, driving around town, if they do see somebody who's, let's say, watering on a Wednesday, they're instructed to put a door hanger on that residence or property and say, you shouldn't be watering at this time of day. Now, if we, we log that, and if we get too many, then we'll take the next steps. The city code allows for fines at certain levels.
Thank you. Is there any other council questions before I go to public? Does Jason or Eloisa have any questions? If not, well, if not, I'm going to bring it back to the council. And for council discussion in action, I did have a question, I mean, I did have, I was going to wait for the discussion. If this passes tonight, people that are watching on TV, where can they see the new regulations if it passes?
We will post them on the city's website, for one. We'll also make handouts available at City Hall.
Okay.
I have been in touch with both the Index Tribune and the Press Democrat.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly to what extent they'll post these new regulations, but they've certainly been advised.
And if we make this tonight, the timing on that for public to understand?
Yes.
If this passes immediately?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there...
I'd also like to note that one of the major concerns is that some property owners defer to their landscaper. We have already sent out notices to landscapers with these restrictions, so that they are aware.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Vice Mayor Gallion?
And obviously, we will be putting this on our water bill.
To the extent that we can, yes.
Okay, that's great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma modifying the mandatory Stage 2 water shortage alert.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Rachel, or Councilmember Huntley, has a second. If there's not any other council discussion, I will go ahead and ask the city clerk slash Assistant City Manager to do a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. With that, for public to understand, we just approved a resolution modifying the Stage 2 water shortage responding to the new state drought emergency water conservation regulations. With that, we move out of our, to council members, or council member reports and comments. Does any council members have reports or comments?
I do.
Councilmember Agarmati?
I do, thank you. I'd like to, oh, thanks, I turned it off instead of on. I was missing from the April 6 meeting because I was with my family, we went to San Antonio. My sister had a special, who has been very ill, has a special desire to visit a shrine there, so our family went away for a week, and I really appreciate that time with my family. I also wanted to mention, I think it's to, I'm going to have to credit Gary, our council member Edwards, I'm going to be participating in the senior project at the high, senior projects at the high school. I think he may have forwarded an email to me, and that's going to be taking place on May 13th, so I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to it. I've done this before, so I encourage anyone who's interested, I think they're probably looking for more volunteers at the high school for the senior projects, I think you'll be amazed by the, the projects themselves. I attended the North Bay Watershed Association meeting, and I was quite impressed with the city manager from Napa. He actually discussed the earthquake that they survived, and he had some great comments, I think, one, of course, was that FEMA really looks at damage and the city looks at, looks at safety. And he said there was a vast difference in, in that interpretation. The other, of course, was because they had so many inspectors that volunteered, he suggests cities look at the way that they read, that inspectors red tag and yellow tag, because they were, they, they weren't familiar with, I think, their own, these codes in Napa, so people weren't allowed back in their homes, and they should have been, so there was just that kind of a mix-up. I'm also on the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, and as a former council member Steve Barbos said, it's, it's a very, it's a very intense and very complex committee, and I, I actually have to say, other people would bring them to their knees and they'd probably be bored, but I find it very exciting. And I'd also like to say, last Sunday, I attended Nonsense at the Community Center, and it will be playing from April 16th to May 3rd at the Community Center. I suggest, you know, if you have time, I went to the matinee, it was fantastic, the singers were unbelievable, and it just made me, it's just a great way to get out of the things that you do normally. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Huntley, Councilmember Edwards, Vice Mayor Gallion?
I attended the Sonoma County Transportation Authority and Regional Climate Protection Authority, and one of the things that they did go ahead and appropriate on consent, but it was an excellent opportunity for us in the valley to be represented, was a cooperative agreement amendment for the Central Sonoma Valley Trail Action, and this is both the bike and pedestrian pass that'll be coming through. So we are getting closer to our healthier, connected community. The second item of interest, of course, I just have to say this, that I had such a fantastic day in the county last, well, the week before, with the announcement of the Smart Train, and it was wonderful to be there, to actually see this realized as, you know, both water on Monday, carbon-free delivery system, the Smart Train on Tuesday, the two, the two trains actually rolling into the Cotati Station. We called it the Rainmaker, because it brought in all the rain as well. But to go through and actually go on the train, to see the seating, to see the accompaniments of what it's going to look like, this has been in design, it's been, you know, you're showing pictures of it, we're building models of it, but to actually see it live and delivered to a train station was just amazing. It brings back all of that ennui you had as, as a child as you wait for the train to arrive, and it's, and it's here, and I can't wait till it, it finishes its completion next year with all the cars, and where we go from there in the future. So, when I go to this meeting here, it was a really incredible celebration for a lot of the directors who have been there through this process, but more so, it was to see how collaborative both counties have been, both Marin and Sonoma Counties, to bring this project forward. And there were many times where we thought that this was not going to happen, but funding was available, and hope is alive, and transportation is going to be happening, and I can't wait for the opening day. Do not miss, it will not disappoint. So I think anything after that was kind of just ordinary. But we were in a great mood in that particular thing. We did talk a little bit more about Climate 2020, some of the adaptation updates, and just that there is more to come on this, and they are finalizing as we go forward month by month. So hopefully, I'm looking for a presentation soon. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just wanted to re-mention that we're going to have our Arbor Day celebration at the Sonoma Plaza at 11 o'clock on April 24th. Looks like I'm speaking, so I better be there, too. That'll be a good day. And also, I want to say that Sonoma Clean Power, I had a meeting, we didn't have a lot on the agenda, but the good news is, Sonoma Clean Power is doing very well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and go to the city manager's comments and announcements, and she has nothing to report, so I'm going to go out to Jason and Eloisa, public comments. Seeing none, I'm going to come back, and before I adjourn, I wanted to remind that our meeting was dedicated to Maple Wilson and Ray Peggini. With that, I close this meeting.